The time is 5 o'clock PM local time and we'll now start the Federal Aviation Administration Office of Commercial Space Transportation, or AST, public hearing for the Programmatic Environmental Assessment for the SpaceX Starship Superheavy Launch Vehicle Program at the SpaceX Boca Chica Launch Site in Cameron County, Texas. Thank you everyone for participating this evening. My name is Jennifer Pigott and I will serve as your neutral facilitator this evening. I'm with ICF, who is supporting the FAA as an independent third-party contractor. This online public hearing is being recorded, transcribed, and translated. I would like to call your attention to the global icon at the bottom right of your Zoom screen. If you click on this icon, you can choose either English or Spanish to ensure you're listening to the hearing in your desired language. If you need assistance with Zoom during the hearing, you can use the chat feature located at the bottom of your screen to message the host. We appreciate your participation in this online virtual hearing. We would much rather be with you in person, but with the current conditions, we want to provide all the information we can while protecting everyone's health. We are going to conduct this as closely as possible to a typical in-person public Please make a note of the phone number for this hearing. The phone number is 833-548-0276, meeting ID 883-94232774, password 4300505. If you experience difficulty with your internet connection at any point during this hearing, you can call this number to listen to the hearing. Additionally, individual internet connections and bandwidths may impact your viewing experience this evening. We recommend closing all apps and programs and limiting other streaming or downloads during this heated hearing. Finally, we are running this hearing using Zoom webinar, which mutes all participants and restricts video feeds. Only the meeting host can unmute you. We will conduct the online public hearing in two parts. First, AST will provide a presentation in both English and Spanish. Then we will conduct a facilitated comment session where interested parties can provide oral comments for the record. We will not host a question and answer session during this hearing. Please submit comments by the close of the comment period, which is November 1st, 2021. We invite you to submit comments orally at tonight's hearing, electronically through the project email address, which is spacexbocachica@icf.com, or mail to Ms. Stacy Z, spacexpea@icf9300leehighwayfairfaxvirginia22031. Additionally, AST will make tonight's presentation available on the project website. I would now like to go over a few ground rules for tonight's hearing. Please remember this hearing is being recorded, so please know inappropriate language or comments. When we get to the comment session of tonight's hearing, I will call on pre-registered commentators first, in the order in which they registered, followed by other commentators that indicate they would like to make a comment this evening. We will receive as many comments as time allows. We do have a very large number of participants on the call who previously registered to speak, so we will be asking everyone to keep their comments to no more than three minutes, and this time limit will be strictly enforced this evening. If you are not called on to provide an oral comment today, you may provide an oral comment at another virtual hearing, provide your comment electronically, or in writing. All comments, regardless of how they are received, are weighted equally. Again, we will make every effort to hear as many oral comments as possible during tonight's hearing. We appreciate the chance to share the proposed project and the environmental process with all of you. We wish we could be together in person, but we're glad to come together virtually. Again, the purpose of this online public hearing is to share information about the programmatic environmental assessment, provide information on how to provide comments, and to receive oral comments. I would now like to introduce Ms. Stacy Z with AST, and Stacy will introduce herself as well as other FAA and SpaceX team members. Stacy?
Hi, good evening. I'm Stacy Z. I'm an environmental specialist and stakeholder engagement program manager for the SpaceX Boca Chica project.
Stacy, you may want to adjust your volume, we're not able to hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now, Jennifer?
Stacy, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I'll start over. I'm Stacy Z. I'm an environmental specialist and stakeholder engagement program manager for the SpaceX Boca Chica project. I'm here with some of the other FAA people from the team, including Anna Cushman, who's the lead for SpaceX licensing, Jacob Canton, who's the lead for the SpaceX Boca Chica licensing project, also Amy Hansen and Chelsea Clarkson from the environmental and stakeholder engagement coordination team. And next, I'm going to open it to Shadir Yoldi, who's doing Spanish translation.
I'm Chad, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Buenas tardes, soy Shadir Yoldi, soy una de las inspectoras de operaciones espaciales en la oficina de transportación espacial comercial. Estoy aquí con mis colegas del departamento de licencias.
I'm an environmental protection specialist.
Okay, thank you Stacy and Shadir. We will now begin the first presentation, the English version. A Spanish version will be played immediately following the English version. We'll go ahead and hit play on the first English presentation.
Hi, I'm Stacy Z. I'm an environmental protection specialist with the FAA's Office of Commercial Space Transportation. I, along with Anna Cushman and Chelsea Clarkson, will explain the FAA's licensing process and the draft programmatic environmental assessment referred to as a PEA for the SpaceX Starship Superheavy Launch Vehicle Program at the SpaceX Boca Chica Launch Site in Cameron County, Texas. Afterwards, Shadir Yoldi will provide the same information in Spanish. After the presentation, you will have the opportunity to provide oral comments on the potential environmental issues outlined in the draft PEA. We are holding this public meeting because SpaceX is proposing to operate its Starship Superheavy Launch Vehicle at its Boca Chica Launch Site in Cameron County, Texas. Starship Superheavy Launch operations require a permit or license from the FAA. The National Environmental Policy Act, or NIPA, requires the FAA to analyze the potential environmental impacts of a proposed licensing action. The FAA is analyzing the potential environmental impacts for this proposed action and is collecting comments on the draft PEA. As SpaceX plans future activities as part of its Starship Superheavy program, the FAA would analyze the environmental impacts of these future activities in a tiered environmental document, as appropriate. A programmatic document is a type of general, broad NIPA review from which subsequent NIPA documents can be tiered. Programmatic NIPA documents may be prepared for broad federal actions occurring over a longer period of time. Once a programmatic EAs prepared, project-specific EAs could tier off the original programmatic document. As SpaceX plans future activities as part of its Starship Superheavy program, the FAA would analyze the environmental impacts of these future activities in a tiered environmental document. Today's discussion focuses on the actions proposed in the PEA. This slide shows the FAA's process for reviewing a vehicle operator license application. The process can occur over a period of months or years depending on the applicant's proposed operation, and it begins with pre-application consultation. Pre-application consultation is the part of the process where the FAA starts coordination with the applicant on their proposed operation. Once the FAA has accepted a license application, the formal evaluation period begins. During this part of the process, the FAA conducts several reviews on policy, payload, safety, airspace integration, financial responsibility, and environmental. The environmental review will be discussed in more detail shortly. Upon completion of the evaluation, if the FAA makes a positive determination and grants an authorization, the next part of the process is an operational phase. This includes compliance monitoring and safety inspections of the operator's licensed activities. An authorization for a vehicle operator license is valid for the period of time necessary to conduct the licensed activity, but may not exceed five years from the issuance date. A licensee can then renew the license by submitting an application to the FAA. SpaceX's application for the proposed Starship Superheavy operations at the Boca Chica Launch Site is currently in the evaluation phase of the licensing process with the FAA. SpaceX's proposed Starship Superheavy program consists of suborbital and orbital launches of both the Starship vehicle without the booster and the two-stage Starship Superheavy vehicle. During a suborbital launch of the Starship vehicle without the booster, the Starship would launch from the vertical launch area, also known as the launch site, and land back at the launch site or downrange either in the Gulf of Mexico or on a floating platform in the Gulf. During development, SpaceX is proposing to conduct up to 20 Starship vehicle suborbital launches annually. As the program progresses, SpaceX is proposing to conduct up to five Starship vehicle suborbital launches annually. Each launch would include a landing. SpaceX is also proposing to conduct up to five Starship Superheavy vehicle suborbital or orbital launches annually. The Starship Superheavy vehicle would launch from the launch site and then, following the launch, perform an immediate boost back and landing of the superheavy booster. The booster landing may occur at the launch site or downrange in the Gulf of Mexico, either on a floating platform or it would be expended into the Gulf of Mexico. After the Starship's second stage completes its suborbital orbital mission, the Starship's second stage may land at the launch site or downrange in the Gulf of Mexico, Atlantic Ocean, or Pacific Ocean on a floating platform. SpaceX's first proposed mission is a launch of the Starship Superheavy vehicle and involves the Superheavy booster first stage landing in the Gulf of Mexico and the Starship second stage landing off the coast of Hawaii in the Pacific Ocean. This proposed mission has not yet been authorized by the FAA. Operations would include closures in and around the launch site. For the analysis, SpaceX estimates that the total number of annual closure hours to be 500 hours for nominal operations and 300 hours for anomalies. This image shows a proposed SpaceX Boca Chica Launch Site. SpaceX's proposal includes two integration towers with associated launch mounts, tanks to hold the propellants and commodities, including liquid and gaseous nitrogen, water, oxygen, methane, helium, and hydraulic fluid, and a crane. This image does not include some of the other proposed infrastructure mentioned in the draft PEA because SpaceX is still deciding the final location and design. However, the other proposed infrastructure mentioned in the draft PEA will be within the launch site.
The FAA is the lead federal agency for the PEA. There are five cooperating agencies who are included due to special expertise and/or jurisdictions. NASA has space launch special expertise. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has expertise regarding threatened and endangered species and national wildlife refuges. The Lower Rio Grande National Wildlife Refuge is located near the launch site. The National Park Service has special expertise regarding historic properties. The Palmetto Ranch Battlefield National Historic Landmark and the Palo Alto Battlefield National Historic Park are located approximately 3 and 19 miles, respectively, from the launch site. The U.S. Coast Guard provides maritime safety and security expertise during launch operations. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is responsible for regulating the deposition fill material in waters of the United States. SpaceX has applied to the Army Corps of Engineers for a modification to its Clean Water Act Section 404 permit for impacts of the proposal on waters of the United States, including wetlands. The Texas Historical Commission, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, Texas General Land Office, Texas Department of Transportation, and the U.S. Navy are participating agencies on the project. This slide lists the environmental impact categories that are analyzed in detail in the draft PEA. The following slides present a high-level summary of the potential impacts for many of the impact categories. Please refer to the draft PEA for a full discussion of potential environmental consequences, as well as proposed mitigation measures to avoid, minimize, or mitigate the potential
The proposed construction and operations would emit air pollutants. Most of the emissions would occur from SpaceX's proposed power plant and natural gas pretreatment and liquefaction. As discussed in the draft PEA, emissions are not expected to result in an exceedance of the national ambient air quality standards. CO emissions may exceed general conformity rule thresholds. However, the proposed power plant would be subject to TCEQ air permitting requirements, and SpaceX would comply with the permit and any associated mitigations. Noise from individual launches, including landing and static fire engine tests, is expected to be heard by people in the surrounding communities, including Brownsville, Laguna Vista, Port Isabel, South Padre Island, and across the border into parts of Mexico. Cumulative noise in the surrounding communities, whether from multiple events of a single operation type or from all of the individual events combined, is estimated to be below levels associated with adverse noise exposure. For sonic booms, predicted overpressure levels for a Starship landing range from 1.2 to 2.2 pounds per square foot, or PSF, and for a Superheavy landing range from 2.5 to 15 This figure shows modeled sonic boom overpressures for a Superheavy landing at the launch site. As I mentioned, the predicted overpressure levels range from 2.5 to 15 PSF. The 11 to 15 PSF levels would be concentrated around the launch site. Levels would be reduced to 4 to 6 PSF at South Padre Island. Visual effects include nighttime light emissions, particularly when the launch vehicle is on the launch pad at night. The effects also include the visual presence of launch-related infrastructure, including the integration towers and crane, as well as the launch vehicle themselves. SpaceX would need to implement a number of measures to minimize visual effects. The proposed action has the potential to adversely affect historic properties. Potential effects could result from visual or auditory effects or from ground vibrations. The FAA has made a finding of adverse effect for historic properties and is currently conducting National Historic Preservation Act, Section 106 consultation with a state historic preservation officer, or SHIPO, and other consulting parties. As part of this consultation process, the FAA, in consultation with a SHIPO and consulting parties, will be amending the current Section 106 programmatic agreement. All adverse effects to historic properties will be mitigated through the Section 106 consultation process, including development of a memorandum of agreement. The proposed action would not result in a permanent incorporation of any Section 4F property. SpaceX's proposed launch activities would have temporary intermittent impacts on the access and availability of some Section 4F properties. Section 4F properties would experience increased sound levels during launch operations. There was also the potentially for impacts caused by launch anomalies. Some of these impacts will be mitigated via consultation with the officials that have jurisdiction over the 4F property. The FAA has made a preliminary determination that the proposed action would not result in more than a minimal physical use of any 4F property and would not result in a constructive SpaceX's proposed construction would result in the filling of approximately 26 acres of floodplain and 17 acres of wetlands. Impacts to waters of the U.S., including wetlands, will be mitigated through SpaceX's Clean Water Act Section 404 permitting process. The FAA has determined the proposed action would adversely affect species listed under and critical habitat designated under the Federal Endangered Species Act. The FAA submitted a biological assessment to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and requested to initiate formal consultation per Section 7 of the Endangered Species Act. Adverse effects to listed species and critical habitat will be minimized through the Endangered Species Act consultation process. The FAA will not conclude its NIPA process until the Fish and Wildlife Service issues a biological opinion. The FAA is also conducting Section 7 consultation with the National Marine Fisheries Service, or NIMPS, but does not expect the proposed action will result in adverse effects to listed species and critical habitat under NIMPS jurisdiction. The final PEA will document the results of all inter-agency consultations. The proposed action is consistent with existing land uses at the Boca Chica Launch Site. As discussed earlier, the proposed action includes 500 hours of annual closures related to nominal operations and 300 hours of annual closures related to anomalies. Closure areas would be established prior to launch-related operations and publicized by Cameron County. The FAA is not responsible for issuing closures. Resources for additional closure information can be found at the bottom of this slide.
Now that we have provided an overview of the PEA, we will discuss the current PEA schedule and how you can remain involved. The FAA carried out coordination with state and federal agencies throughout preparation of the draft PEA. The FAA has also initiated agency consultation with federal resource agencies, such as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, National Marine Fisheries Service, Texas Historical Commission, and government-to-government consultation with Native American tribes. We are currently in step four of the PEA schedule. The PEA was published on September 17th with an initial 30-day comment period. The FAA received requests to extend that comment period, and the extension was granted. Today is a draft PEA public hearing, and the public comment period on the draft PEA closes on November 1st. The next step is for the FAA to publish the final PEA, which will incorporate public comments received on the draft PEA and will announce a finding on the proposed action, either a mitigated finding of no significant impact, or a notice of intent to prepare an environmental impact statement because one or more impacts are significant and cannot be mitigated to levels below significance. Comments on the draft PEA can be submitted either by email or mail to the addresses on the slide. We request that comments be submitted by Monday, November 1st, to ensure that they are considered in the development of the final PEA. The FAA cannot guarantee that comments received after November 1st will be considered in the development of the final PEA. Before including personal identifying information in your comment, be advised that your entire comment may be made publicly available at any time. While you can ask us in your comment to withhold from public review your personal identifying information, we cannot guarantee that we will be able to do so. The draft PEA and a blank public comment form are both available on the FAA's website at the link provided on the slide. The FAA's website also includes a place to sign up for the project mailing list. Members of the mailing list will receive project updates, including notification of the FAA publishing the final PEA and the FAA's finding. The remaining portion of tonight's meeting is reserved for providing oral comments. Jennifer will explain the process. Okay, thank you for that presentation. We will now play the same presentation in Spanish.
....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... para conducir la actividad para la cual la licencia fue aprobada, pero no debe exceder cinco años desde la fecha que fue emitida. La persona que posee la licencia la puede renovar enviando una aplicación al FAA. La aplicación de SpaceX para el lanzamiento del cohete Starship Super Heavy en Boca Chica se encuentra en la fase de evaluación del proceso para obtener la licencia con el FAA. Operaciones de lanzamiento propuestas. El programa propuesto de SpaceX del cohete Starship Super Heavy consiste en lanzamientos suborbitales y orbitales del vehículo Starship sin el impulsador Super Heavy y el cohete de dos etapas Starship Super Heavy. Durante el lanzamiento suborbital del vehículo Starship, el cohete sería lanzado desde el área de lanzamiento vertical, o sitio de lanzamiento, y volvería al sitio de lanzamiento o se desviaría hacia el Golfo de México o hacia una plataforma flotante en el Golfo. Durante el desarrollo del programa, SpaceX está proponiendo conducir hasta 20 lanzamientos suborbitales del vehículo Starship. A medida que progresa el programa, SpaceX está proponiendo hasta cinco lanzamientos anuales suborbitales del cohete Starship. Cada lanzamiento incluiría un aterrizaje. SpaceX también está proponiendo conducir hasta cinco lanzamientos suborbitales u orbitales del cohete Starship Super Heavy anualmente. El cohete Starship Super Heavy se lanzaría desde el sitio de lanzamiento y luego, a continuación y de manera inmediata, la primera etapa o el impulsador Super Heavy volaría de regreso y aterrizaría. Luego de que la segunda etapa del cohete Starship termine su vuelo suborbital o misión orbital, podría aterrizar en el sitio de lanzamiento o se desviaría hacia una plataforma flotante en el Golfo de México, el Océano Atlántico o el Océano Pacífico. La primera misión propuesta por SpaceX es el lanzamiento del cohete Starship Super Heavy e involucra el aterrizaje de la primera etapa en el Golfo de México y la segunda etapa del cohete aterrizando en la costa de Hawaii en el Océano Pacífico. Esta misión no ha sido autorizada aún. Las operaciones inclurían los cierres dentro y alrededor del sitio de lanzamiento. Para este análisis, SpaceX estima un número total de cierres de 500 horas para operaciones nominales y 300 en caso de anomalías. Sitio de lanzamiento vertical. La imagen muestra el sitio de lanzamiento de SpaceX en Boca Chica. La propuesta de SpaceX incluye dos torres de integración con las montures de lanzamiento asociados, tanques para propellentes y materia prima, incluyendo nitrógeno líquido y gaseoso, agua, oxígeno, metano, helio y líquido hidráulico, y una grúa. Esta imagen no incluye alguna de las infraestructuras mencionadas en el PEA en desarrollo porque SpaceX aún está decidiendo sobre la ubicación y el diseño final. Sin embargo, el resto de la infraestructura mencionada en el PEA en desarrollo está ubicado dentro del sitio de lanzamiento. Agencias líderes y colaboradoras. La FAA es la Agencia Federal que lidera el PEA. Hay cinco agencias que están incluidas en este proceso debido a su experiencia y/o jurisdicción. La NASA tiene experiencia en lanzamientos espaciales. El Servicio de Peses y Vida Silvestre de los Estados Unidos tiene experiencia en cuanto a las especies amenazadas y en peligro de extinción y refugios de vida silvestre nacionales. El Refugio Silvestre Nacional del Bajo Río Grande está localizado cerca del sitio de lanzamiento. El Servicio Nacional de Parques tiene experiencia especial en propiedades históricas. El Monumento Histórico Nacional del Campo de Batalla en el Rancho Palmito y el Parque Nacional Histórico del Campo de Batalla Palo Alto están localizados a tres y 19 millas respectivamente del sitio de lanzamiento. La Guardia Costera de los Estados Unidos provee experiencia en seguridad y protección marítima durante las operaciones de lanzamiento. El Cuerpo de Ingenieros del Ejército de los Estados Unidos es responsable de la regulación y disposición del material de relleno en las aguas de los Estados Unidos. SpaceX ha solicitado al Cuerpo de Ingenieros del Ejército de los Estados Unidos una modificación al permiso de la Sección 404 de la Ley de Agua Limpia debido a los impactos de la propuesta en las aguas de los Estados Unidos, incluyendo los humedales. La Comisión Histórica de Texas, el Departamento de Parques y Vida Silvestre de Texas, la Oficina General de Tierras de Texas, el Departamento de Transporte de Texas y la Base Naval de los Estados Unidos son agencias que están participando en el proyecto también. Categorías de los impactos analizados en detalle. Esta diapositiva lista las categorías de impactos ambientales que serán analizadas en detalle en el PEA en desarrollo. Las siguientes diapositivas presentarán un resumen de alto nivel de los posibles impactos para muchas de las categorías de impacto. Por favor, consulte al PEA en desarrollo donde encontrará una descripción en detalle de las posibles consecuencias ambientales, al igual que las medidas de mitigación propuestas para evitar, minimizar o mitigar los posibles impactos. Categorías de impacto analizadas en detalle. Calidad del aire, clima, ruido y uso de las tierras compatibles con el ruido, efectos visuales, recursos culturales, Ley del Departamento de Transporte, Sección 4F, recursos hídricos, recursos biológicos, recursos costeros, uso de la tierra, materiales peligrosos, desechos sólidos y prevención de la contaminación, recursos naturales y suministro de energía, socioeconomía, justicia ambiental y riesgo de seguridad y salud ambiental de los niños. Impactos en la calidad del aire. Las operaciones y construcción propuestas emitirían contaminantes del aire. Muchas de las emisiones se generarían de las plantas de energía y el pretatamiento y licofacción del gas natural. Como se discute en el PEA en desarrollo, no se espera que las emisiones excedan los estándares ambientales de calidad del aire. Las emisiones de monóxido de carbono pueden exceder el umbral de la Regla de Conformidad General. La planta de energía estaría sujeta a los requisitos de permisos del aire de la TCEQ. SpaceX cumpliría con el permiso y las mitigaciones. Impactos del ruido. Entre los impactos del ruido se incluyen los aumentos en los niveles de sonido debido a la construcción, operaciones en las instalaciones, lanzamientos y aterrizajes. Se espera que los ruidos derivados de los lanzamientos, incluyendo los aterrizajes y los eventos de las pruebas estáticas de los motores sean escuchados por las personas en comunidades circundantes incluyendo Brownsville, Laguna Vista, Port Isabel, Isla del Padre Sur y atravesando la frontera en algunas partes de México. El ruido acumulativo en las comunidades circundantes, ya sea de eventos múltiples o de una sola operación o de todos los eventos individuales combinados, está estimado en ser menor que los niveles asociados con exposición adversa al ruido. Se predice que los niveles de sobrepresión del aterrizaje del Starship varían dentro del rango de 1.2 a 2.2 libras por pi cuadrado y para el aterrizaje del Starship Super Heavy entre 2.5 a 15 libras por pi cuadrado. Esta ilustración muestra la sobrepresión resultante de la explosión sónica durante el aterrizaje del Starship Super Heavy en el sitio de lanzamiento. Como lo mencioné con anterioridad, la predicción sobre los niveles de sobrepresión varían dentro del rango de 2.5 a 15 libras por pi cuadrado. Alrededor del sitio de lanzamiento, los niveles de sobrepresión pueden alcanzar de 11 a 15 libras por pi cuadrado. Estos niveles se reducirían al rango entre 4 a 6 libras por pi cuadrado en la Isla del Padre Sur. Efectos visuales. Los efectos visuales incluyen emisiones de luz durante la noche, particularmente cuando el cohete está en la plataforma de lanzamiento, así como la presencia visual de la infraestructura relacionada con el lanzamiento, incluyendo las torres de integración y la grúa, así como los cohetes. SpaceX necesitaría implementar una serie de medidas para minimizar los efectos visuales. Impactos en los recursos culturales. La acción propuesta tiene el potencial de afectar negativamente las propiedades históricas. Los posibles efectos pueden ser a causa de efectos visuales o auditivos o de vibraciones del suelo. La FAA ha encontrado un efecto adverso para las propiedades históricas y actualmente está llevando a cabo una consulta de la Sección 106 de la Ley de Preservación Histórica Nacional con el Oficial Estatal de Preservación Histórica, o SHIP-O, y otras partes consultoras. Como parte de este proceso de consulta, la FAA, y en consulta con el SHIP-O y las partes consultoras, modificará el acuerdo programático de la Sección 106. Todos los efectos adversos a las propiedades históricas se mitigarán a través del proceso de consulta de la Sección 106, incluido el desarrollo de un memorándum de acuerdo. Ley del Departamento de Transporte, Sección 4F. La acción propuesta no resultaría en una incorporación permanente de ninguna propiedad de la Sección 4F. Las actividades de lanzamiento propuestas por SpaceX tendrían impactos temporales e intermitentes en el acceso y la disponibilidad de algunas propiedades de la Sección 4F. Las propiedades de la Sección 4F experimentarían un aumento de los niveles de sonido durante las operaciones de lanzamiento. También existe la posibilidad de impactos causados por anomalías de lanzamiento. Algunos de estos impactos se mitigarían mediante consultas con los funcionarios que tienen jurisdicción sobre las propiedades 4F. La FAA ha hecho una determinación preliminar de que la acción propuesta no resultaría en más que un uso físico mínimo de cualquier propiedad 4F y no resultaría en un uso constructivo. Impactos en los recursos hídricos. La construcción propuesta por SpaceX resultaría en el relleno de aproximadamente 26 acres de llanura luvial y 17 acres de humedales. Los impactos al agua de los Estados Unidos, incluyendo los humedales, se mitigarán a través del proceso de permisos de SpaceX de la Sección 404 de la Ley de Agua Limpia. Impactos sobre los recursos biológicos. La FAA ha determinado que la acción propuesta afectaría negativamente a las especies incluidas en la lista bajo el hábitat crítico designado según la Ley Federal de Especies en Peligro de Extinción. La FAA presentó una evaluación biológica al Servicio de Peses y Vida Silvestre de los Estados Unidos y solicitó iniciar una consulta formal según la Sección 7 de la Ley de Especies en Peligro de Extinción. Los efectos adversos a las especies incluidas en la lista y al hábitat crítico se minimizarían durante el proceso de consulta de la Ley de Especies en Peligro de Extinción. La FAA no concluirá su proceso de NIPA hasta que el Servicio de Pesca y Vida Silvestre emita una opinión biológica. La FAA también está realizando consultas de la Sección 7 con el Servicio Nacional de Pesquerías Marinas, o NMFS, pero no espera que la acción propuesta tenga como resultado efectos adversos para las especies incluidas en la lista bajo el hábitat crítico de la jurisdicción del NMFS. El PEA final documentará los resultados de todas las consultas entre agencias. Impactos en el uso de la tierra. La acción propuesta es consistente con los usos de la tierra existentes en el sitio de lanzamiento de Boca Chica. Como se discutió anteriormente, la acción propuesta incluye 500 horas de cierres anavales relacionados con operaciones nominales y 300 horas de cierres anuales relacionados con anomalías. Las áreas de cierre se establecerían antes de las operaciones relacionadas con el lanzamiento y el condado de Cameron las publicaría. La FAA no es responsable de emitir cierres. Los recursos para obtener información adicional sobre el cierre se pueden encontrar en esta diapositiva, la línea directa, la página web del condado de Cameron y para suscribirse a las actualizaciones de texto. Programa de participación de las partes interesadas y del PEA. Ahora que se ha proporcionado una descripción general del PEA, discutiré el calendario actual del PEA y cómo usted puede seguir involucrado. La FAA lleva a cabo la coordinación con las agencias estatales y federales durante la preparación del PEA en desarrollo. La FAA también ha incluido consultas con agencias de recursos federales como el Servicio de Pesca y Vida Silvestre de los Estados Unidos, Servicio Nacional de Pesca Marina, Comisión Histórica de Texas y consulta de gobierno a gobierno con tribus nativas americanas. Actualmente estamos en el paso cuatro del programa PEA. El PEA se publicó el 17 de septiembre con un periodo inicial de comentarios de 30 días. La FAA recibió solicitudes para extender este periodo de comentarios y se concedió la prórroga. El día de hoy se lleva a cabo la audiencia pública del PEA en desarrollo y el periodo de comentarios públicos sobre el PEA en desarrollo se cerrará el 1 de noviembre. El siguiente paso es que la FAA publique el PEA final que incorporará los comentarios del público recibidos en el PEA en desarrollo y anunciará un hallazgo sobre la acción propuesta, ya sea un hallazgo mitigado de impacto no significativo o un abuso de intención de preparar un informe ambiental debido a que uno o más impactos son significativos y no pueden mitigarse a niveles por debajo de su significancia. Comentarios sobre el PEA en desarrollo. Los comentarios sobre el PEA en desarrollo se pueden enviar por correo electrónico o por correo postal a las direcciones que aparecen en la diapositiva. Solicitamos que los comentarios se envíen a más tardar el lunes 1 de noviembre para garantizar que se tengan en cuenta en el desarrollo del PEA final. La FAA no puede garantizar los comentarios recibidos después del 1 de noviembre serían considerados en el desarrollo del PEA final. Antes de incluir información de identificación personal en su comentario, tenga en cuenta que su comentario completo puede hacerse público en cualquier momento. Usted puede pedirnos en su comentario que retengamos la publicación de su información de identificación personal, pero no podemos garantizarle que podamos hacerlo. El PEA en desarrollo y un formulario de comentarios públicos en blanco están disponibles en el sitio web del FAA en enlace previsto en la diapositiva. El sitio web del FAA también incluye un lugar para inscribirse en la lista de correo del proyecto. Los miembros registrados en la lista de correo recibirán actualizaciones del proyecto incluyendo la notificación cuando el FAA publique el PEA final y el hallazgo del FAA. La parte restante de la reunión de esta noche está reservada para hacer comentarios orales. Jennifer, let's explicar el proceso.
Okay, thank you for those presentations. We have now reached the second part of tonight's online hearing, a facilitated comment session. If you'd like to make an oral comment, please send a chat message to the meeting host or raise your hand using the hand raise icon. If you're on Zoom or for call-in users, you can press star nine to raise your hand and we'll add you to the speaker list. We will call on you in the order in which you raise your hand. Each commenter will have three minutes to make their comments. Again, we have a very large number of individuals wishing to make oral comments this evening, over 100 currently. So we will be strictly enforcing the three-minute timeline this evening. At the start of your comments, please state your full name for the record. Again, we are not hosting a question-answer session this evening, only accepting oral comments. I've put the first five speakers in the chat queue, which are Edward Lukowski, Thomas Marota, Druve Patel, Jean Gore and Jenny Spicer. If you would, please raise your hand and we will unmute your lines so that you can provide your comments. If you would, please raise your hand, and we will unmute your lines so that you can provide your comments. Okay, Druve Patel, I see your hand raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Druve Patel?
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
You are unmuted?
Yeah, alright, so I'd like to say that FAA and SpaceX, we're here, are really doing a good job. And I just wish whatever the decision they're taking, I'm not a specialist in the environment department, but I just wish well for SpaceX and keeping in consideration the, what to say, the environment. They do good. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Edward Lukowski. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, do you hear me?
Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Alright, well, I would just like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to make this comment. I did have something written down, but I'm going to go off the top of my head. My name is Edward Lukowski. I don't live near Texas. I have no stake in this currently, but I would just like to say that SpaceX is doing an amazing job in Texas, and that I would like to see this process move a bit faster. I understand that there are some regulations that say that it needs to be a slower process, but I do not believe that those regulations should be in place. And yes, thank you, that is all I would like to say.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jenny Spicer. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Jenny, are you there?
Yes, hello.
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jenny Spicer. I've been here since July, and occupying a place in Tropical Trails RV Resort, and driving over every morning and watching the sunrise, and slowly but surely have watched a rocket rise from the dunes of the beach, and it's been an honor and a privilege to be able to see something magical created out of this world. And it's just been beautiful, and I've had the opportunity to paint it. So I've been painting every day different landscapes. And one landscape I find interesting to paint is the part that Mexico plays. I know that in the actions proposed, it said it was labeled as parts of Mexico. I think there needs to be some more research requested for this. We're right on the border. I believe we should have a desalination tank, or a desalination facility that's powered by solar power. We have some in Texas. I think there's 48, but they're not completely energy efficient. I think we can show that in this area and also be able to have some water security and things like that for our neighbors across the border. And this border town, I think, has one of the impacts that SpaceX would have. This would be a beautiful solution. I think there also needs to be some discussions around it being a, the neighborhood taking care of the historical markers. I know I've went up and down the road numerous times. I've put flags out by all the historical markers. I brought my pruning shears and cleaned by the historical markers. This community, I noticed, really does take care of their dead and their graves. But for some reason, the historical markers on this road have been overlooked. So any attention paid to that, I believe, is only positive for the history of, not only this town, but the history of a planet and a culture that is also eliciting history being created at the end of a civil war site and road is going to be the beginning of a beautiful future of a spacefaring civilization. And thank you so much for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to respectfully listening to the rest of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jean Gore. Rachel Gore, I see your hand raised. Ask you to unmute. Yep, go ahead, your volume is really soft.
Okay, my name is Jean Gore. I live on South Padre Island with my family. I'm sorry, my family lives on South Padre Island here, adjacent to SpaceX Boca Chica. Many generations of my family have lived here, only in Texas close, including my native American ancestry. I've witnessed every Starship static fire and launch to date. I surf and fish and camp and boat regularly in the area of South Bay and the Gulf. And I personally have not seen any negative impacts to the environment or the wildlife. I actually just returned from Cape Canaveral to witness the inspiration for launch, and I was really impressed with how well the surrounding wildlife refuge there was managed and the abundance of wildlife. I'm looking forward to the same level of progressive management, not only to preserve, but to enhance our local natural resources. The excitement and inspiration in this development, SpaceX and the new age of space exploration, is it's really obvious in children, adults of all ages, in community, and even online around the world. I personally absolutely and fully approve and support SpaceX's development and launches of Starship and Super Heavy for a multitude of reasons, far too many to mention here in these three minutes. But I will provide a fully detailed written report on the environmental assessment to the FAA before November 1st. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next five speakers are Juan Mancias, Joyce Hamilton, Rebecca Hinajosa, Hinojosa, Saul Pacheco, and Nicholas Andrich. If you would, please raise your hands, so I can ask you to unmute. Joyce Hamilton, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, is this Joyce Hamilton?
Yes, am I, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Alright. Mainly, I think people should remember that from, like when I was a child, that we sat and we watched the first moon landing. And for years, you know, we've waited and waited for that to continue. Now, obviously SpaceX is the company that's going to provide that, and it's going to be an American company. And not only does SpaceX do that for us and make us the leaders in the space race, they're also providing plenty of jobs for that community that they're in. And also for the people that are going to go and visit the place, that's more business for the area. I believe that, you know, he's a personal business, it's not a government business. And anytime he wants to, he can move his business to another country. I see that the Russians are trying to get him to go there. Do we want Americans, or do we want Russians to be the next ones to land on the moon? And I think we should, you know, just treat him like he should be treated. He's an entrepreneur, he's a businessman, he's helping out the community, and he's making Americans have a little respect around the world. If there's an environmental issue, I mean, he's a billionaire. I'm sure he could give a couple billion for that, as long as he covers for any broken windows that they have, which I'm sure they would be more than happy to do. You know, there should be no problems. But everybody wants us to be, look a lot better in the world, because we haven't looked real great in the world for a long time. And this is one way to do it, and that's to support SpaceX and take out all the negative blocks we're putting in front of them, and let him go as fast as he can. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Nicholas Andrich. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Alright, so my name is Nicholas Andrich. I'm, I live in California, but I've visited Boca Chica many times, and I think it's a beautiful place. I love Starship and SpaceX, and every time I go there, I'm filled with joy and happiness when I see Starship. And there's so many tourists and amazing people I've met going to Starbase or Boca Chica, and I think they're all amazing. And I think that Boca Chica is the place where Starship is going to innovate the world, since Starship is the rocket that's going to go to Mars and all these other places that we have not yet imagined. And there might be causes that might concern people, but we have to sometimes put those aside for the greater good. And I feel like going to Mars and being one of the first countries, as the US, to go to Mars would be amazing, and I feel like that is one of the most important factors here, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rebecca Hinajosa. If you would, please raise your hand. Okay, Rebecca Hinajosa, you want to unmute?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to say that the FAA is conducting, the way that the FAA is conducting this regulatory process is actually a violation of the Title VI Civil Rights Act of 1964. And what I mean by that is, this process has not been made available in the Spanish language. In fact, the FAA should have issued a 30-day notice in Spanish, notified the public that there would be Spanish interpretation, closed captioning, 30 days in advance, and instead, the FAA, at the last minute, three days before the hearing, announced that Spanish should be available. So that is discrimination against the Rio Grande Valley community. I'm multi-generational from the Rio Grande Valley. I live in Brownsville, Texas. I'm also an environmentalist and a community member. And I've seen firsthand how SpaceX operations are actually very destructive to our community, how it's driving gentrification, how it's starting to displace locals. People have already been displaced from the Boca Chica Village. And I'm here to speak really in opposition. I oppose the permit and any authorization for SpaceX to expand their facility here at Boca Chica Beach. And going back, you know, this is a Title VI, violation of Title VI Act, and that's why a bunch of local community groups from the Rio Grande Valley have filed a complaint with the Office of Civil Rights, with the FAA and the US Department of Transportation. Those groups include La Unión del Pueblo Entero, Trucha RGV, Las Imagenistas, Vozes Unidas, the Lone Star Chapter Sierra Club. These are all local organizations that have community members from the Rio Grande Valley who, you know, who are being directly impacted by SpaceX operations. Also, the FAA should have an entire environmental impact statement. Just having an EA is not enough, considering the size and scope of the proposed SpaceX project. New gas plants, drilling for gas on beaches, desalination plants. This is a massive footprint that this operations would have on our community. And just overall, I want to say that we, as humans, should be investing in our planet and dealing with the destructive consequences of climate change.
30 seconds.
And that, you know, SpaceX is just, is just something that is directly destructive and another example of colonization of our community that we just don't need. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Joyce Hamilton. Again, as a reminder, please state your full name at the start of your comments for the court reporter to transcribe. Joyce Hamilton, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
I am now unmuted. I think-
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Joyce Hamilton. I'm representing myself as a resident of South Texas and a frequent visitor over the past 20 years to the natural areas surrounding the location where SpaceX is now operating and where it proposes to build and launch the SpaceX Super Heavy Launch Vehicle. My preview of the draft PEA raised some concerns for me about potential impacts of the tests, the launches, the ongoing construction, and the other aspects of this proposed expanded project on what is a fragile and unique coastline. In fact, we've already seen the damaging impact of a recent launch failure with a wide and destructive debris field along the beach and surrounding wetlands. In fact, biologists, I know one of them, who monitors the nesting plovers, which is a species of concern, have noted a dramatic decrease in nesting since the inception of the construction and the other operations at the SpaceX site. So in the past year, the Highway 4 Boca Chica Beach access has transformed dramatically with the existing buildup of the SpaceX launch site. It was always in the past a beautiful, pristine, natural area of wetlands, mudflats, lomas, and dunes with an ecosystem supporting myriad species of wildlife, including wintering nesting and migrating waterfowl, which have been a joy to birders and other naturalists and the general public who share a concern for the preservation of this unique coastal ecosystem. So, I, you know, needless to say, my most passionate concern is for the protection and conservation of the wildlife and the unique habitat here that supports them. But I also would like to speak up for the rights of the local community, the fishermen, the sea turtle rescue volunteers, the naturalists and birders, and the families from the surrounding area who lost their right to regular access to the beach on a regular basis. And so I feel all of these are big concerns, and I'd like to just end by urging the FAA to conduct a serious, comprehensive environmental impact study, EIS, on the SpaceX Super Heavy Rocket Proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next five speakers this evening are Sharon Almagur, Wes Townsend, Alan Guggenheim, Dula Hashi, and Taijin Koub. If you would, please raise your hand. Sharon, I see your hand raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Sharon Almagur. I have property in Port Isabel, where we reside. I'm here to speak in opposition to the permit. First off, I echo the concerns that were previously raised by Joyce Hamilton and Rebecca Hinajosa. The FAA needs to do a comprehensive environmental impact assessment of this project. What's been done for a project of this magnitude for the area that is going to fundamentally transform this area is cursory and it's inadequate. And so you need to conduct a complete environmental impact study. Secondly, I too am concerned about the overtaking of access to Boca Chica Beach. Local residents who have been accustomed and who have a constitutional right under the Texas Open Beach Act, under the Constitution, because we have open beaches here in Texas, have lost access to Boca Chica Beach. The company has violated agreements with the county. In terms of beach access, they have regularly closed off the beach when they were not authorized to do so, and have basically just run roughshod over locals in the area. And that's been wrong, and their heavy-handed tactics have not gone unnoticed, and they are inappropriate. Secondly, we've had launches at my home in Port Isabel with these smaller rockets. I don't know how you can say that the noise is in any way acceptable, or that the vibrations are in any way acceptable. My house shakes with little rockets, and it sounds like the rocket is coming right over my head. My house shakes with little rockets and it sounds like the rocket is coming right over my head. And when they boost these heavy rockets, uh, you're already seeing cracks and um, and certain seismic issues having to do in, in South Padre Island. But I expect that that's gonna come, become widespread and you're gonna see widespread property damage. And uh, you know, Elon Musk coming in after the fact, I'm sure they'll deny all of it. But him coming in after the fact, trying to throw a little bit of money around is not going to take care of this problem. So you need to do your job, you need to do a complete and uh, comprehensive assessment of this project.
Thirty seconds.
Permit. Um, that's really all I have to say, please do your job. This is a, a profound, uh, this is a profound uh, project that is going to fundamentally change this area of the world. And you need to do your job and you need to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, again, folks, I'm getting some chat messages um, asking uh, why I've skipped people. Um, I'm doing my best not to skip anybody, but if I don't see the individual on the Zoom platform, we have so many people who want to make oral comments this evening, I am moving on to the next person. So if you registered under a different name than you pre-registered under, um, I won't be able to identify you. Or if you have, um, you know, signed on perhaps under your spouse's name that might be different or a roommate's name, I won't be able to identify you. Okay, our next speaker is Wes Townsend, who I'm not seeing on the Zoom. Alan Guggenheim, I'm also not seeing on Zoom tonight. Durama Hashi, I'm not seeing on Zoom. And Tiagin Kube, I'm not seeing on Zoom. I'm gonna put the names of the next five speakers in the chat that I'm gonna be calling on. Abid Masuri, again, I apologize if I mispronounce your name. Zachary Parker, Yasin Safi, Ronnie Joseph and Dan Elton. If you would please raise your hand and I will call on you. Abid, I see your hand raised, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Yeah, sure, um, thank you for giving me this opportunity. Um, so I have traveled to Starbase, Texas, uh, from Pennsylvania. I think uh, for four times now, just to see the launches and uh, what is happening there. And uh, for me, uh, this is something that has not been done in, in our lifetime. So I'm just hoping that uh, people give SpaceX a chance. Uh, because um, for example, we use GPS and recently at Cape Carnival, they launched the GPS three satellites, the upgrade. All that happened with um, it kept on, kept Carnival where the surrounding area also contains wildlife. As I understand that we need to protect wildlife, we also need to be given an opportunity to enable uh, humanity to explore what is in other planets. Because it is, as we uh, live here on Earth, we should know that like a disaster can happen at any time on Earth. So we should explore what's out there. And SpaceX is giving us this opportunity. So they should be allowed at all costs and all their environmental concerns. Even when airplanes were um, invented, people lost their lives because they had to sacrifice to uh, put humanity out there and advanced uh, the way uh, humanity lives. So I'm hoping that uh, when all these things are being considered, we try to make sure that development comes first. And that um, this Starship super heavy development is allowed to proceed. Because uh, you never know in the future, these thirty minute flights from continent to continent will be a reality and then it, it will change the way we operate in the world. So uh, that is, that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Zachary Parker, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, my name is Zachary Parker. Uh, I'm a Georgia resident, not representing any organization or special interest group. I'm speaking on uh, behalf of my personal capacity as an enthusiastic supporter of SpaceX and a supporter of the human enterprise to push mankind's boundary beyond Earth. As embodied by SpaceX's various missions. In recent years, the world has seen such unprecedented transformations, advanced technologies and their rapid applications. Most notably, the scientific explorations and technological endeavors made by SpaceX are unmatched by any other business or government entity pursuing similar purposes. SpaceX is working tirelessly and steadfastly in a bid to create the largest, most capable rocket in the world the world has yet to see. This rocket's known as Starship for a long-term goal of transporting human passengers. SpaceX's pursuit in the super heavy launch program, vehicle program, Starship are applaudable. The company is making history and deserves a full support of the American people. Not only is the project poised to advance SpaceX exploration, it is also boosting the local economy uh, surrounding Boca Chica in SpaceX's operational bases uh, and launching site. Our collective understanding in space is going to increase and the scientific community will benefit from a historic case study. While I applaud SpaceX for, for this uh, exciting program, I also want to call on the company leadership to work collaboratively with and consult all stakeholders and from community members, local governments, federal government, cross-disciplinary experts to ensure that the environmental costs associated with such an ambitious launching are minimized, mitigated and contained. SpaceX has a social responsibility to fulfill and that entails making sure the ecological footprint of this important exploration is sustainable. Uh, I thank you for the opportunity to provide my testimony and I would like to say Godspeed to SpaceX. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Yasin Shafi, who I'm not seeing on the Zoom, followed by Ronnie Joseph. Ronnie, I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Ronnie, I show that you're unmuted. Ronnie Joseph? Ronnie Joseph, are you able to unmute on your end, you're unmuted on Zoom? Okay, I'll come back. Okay, our next speaker is Dan Elton. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Yes, hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I feel like there's a, a possible failure mode here that I'm very concerned about. And that failure mode is that there will be additional delays, additional calls for more reviews, which will delay this project for months and months and months and possibly years. Now nationally, we have this problem um, with uh, the NEPA, uh, National Environmental Policy Act. And that's a major reason why here in the United States, we haven't been able to build uh, housing, for instance, affordable housing, we haven't been able to build high-speed rail. Um, we haven't been able to build nuclear power plants to protect our environment. And it's because whenever somebody wants to build something big and ambitious, there's a small number of vocal um, environmental extremists who come in and call for more reviews, more reviews, and it just gets delayed indefinitely. So I'm very, very concerned that something similar could happen here. Um, now, as far as the environmental impact of SpaceX, uh, I think if you just look at a map, it's in relation to the, the huge swaths of wildlife around the facility, uh, SpaceX's footprint is very, very small in relation to that. So in, in, in a relative sense, like the, the footprint is very small. Uh, yeah, some, some piping plovers may have to move, but, but there are always trade-offs um, when you're building anything. The other point I would make is I would, when, when you have people um, speaking out against the problem uh, here, I would not um, take those to be representative of the community at large. What you're hearing is just vocal activists. Um, I believe that most people in the community around Boca Chica are extremely happy because of the jobs and prosperity that SpaceX is bringing. And so uh, the idea that there's like, this is bad for the community, I, I don't think it makes sense. Um, the final thing I, I guess I wanted to say was there's been this narrative that SpaceX is sort of like taking over the community. Um, but I would note that
Thirty seconds.
They, when they purchased the um, houses, that was done in a voluntary fashion, this was not using eminent domain. And um, there are still residents that, that live in Boca Chica and that's their right to do so. So I just wanted to mention that narrative is, is really false. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is, our next five speakers are Puvra Aluk, again, I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Julian Siano, Brandon McHugh, David Larson and Sanjay Matthew. I posted those names in the chat, if you would please raise your hand and I'll call on you. Apurva Aluk, I'm asking you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm Apurvalo, I'm not representing any organization or a group, I'm also not a resident of Texas, but I have to express my views to uh, SpaceX has been an inspiration for me since the first time I heard about them. It was back in two thousand twelve thirteen when the Grasshopper program was online. They went on to land their first booster back in two thousand fifteen and uh, teams at SpaceX did that with utmost discipline towards the environment and have been very thorough since then. Uh, a recent example I'd like to add is when in February, when there was a power outage and the winter storm was fast approaching. Uh, there was an organization by the name of Sea Turtles Incorporated of South Padre Island and their goal was to protect the endangered sea turtles. Since there was no power and uh, there were very slim chances of the turtles making through it, SpaceX came to help them with providing generators and uh, they ended up saving around forty-five hundred sea turtles and a news report said that many of the sea turtles were more than a centuries old. Uh, this is just an example of how SpaceX uh, people saying that NASA SpaceX are not concerned about the environment and I, it's just not true because whatever they do, environment is their utmost priority. And I truly believe that the environmental assessment done by SpaceX for their launch operation from Boca Chica, Texas, is done by keeping the environment first. And I think the launch license should be provided for the same. You know, teams at Boca Chica have been working very hard now more than ever before to achieve the goal of making life interplanetary. And the FAA should as well assist SpaceX in the same. No, we've been waiting for this opportunity for a very long time after the moon landings. It's been more than sixty years since, fifty years, sorry. And uh, it's after such a long time that we have an opportunity to explore other worlds and that's all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Julian Siano, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Thanks Jennifer, uh, my name is Julian Siano and I'm uh, just representing myself. I'm here to support SpaceX, I think their goal is ambitious, worthwhile and highly ethical. Uh, NASA Earth Science Directorate has a critical role in understanding our environment. Superheavy is attempting to reduce the cost to get to space by one to three orders of magnitude. Uh, th- this will enable future missions uh, to study the Earth and the Earth's environment. I, I think there's a lot of other positive benefits to this, but you know, just keeping it in the scope of environment. I think it's important to think about the major potential upside of this, uh, especially when compared to other environmental impact studies. You know, this is one where we really do have a way to make a very positive change. Uh, global climate change, just other global uh, environmental issues, that they really are global and we need, we need global solutions for that and that's part of what this project can bring us. Um, I really think the launch license should be granted. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Brandon McHugh, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Darren?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hey, my name is Brandon McHugh, I'm totally in, um, I'm on the side of SpaceX with this one. Um, I will always be on their side, I think that their endeavors are um, absolutely necessary and, and, and vital to um, humanity as, as a species, not just the United States or, or the planet, but humanity as a whole. Um, I, I appreciate wildlife concerns and the concerns of the locals of uh, Boca Chica. I, I would be concerned for my home as well, but I mean, where, where else will SpaceX go? I, a- anywhere that they tried to set up shop, they're going to be faced with the same concerns. And I, I mean, I think that goes for any business, they'll, they'll, they'll face the same kind of pushback anywhere. Um, the pros totally outweigh the cons on Earth is here for us to use its resources to, to grow and expand and, and evolve. And now is the time that we need to be pushing the evolution of consciousness. We, we're, we're, we're reaching the the pinnacle of technological advancement on Earth and it's, 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 it's time to get out. Um, one day the Earth will be swallowed by the sun and on that day, it's not gonna matter who has what healthcare or who is what, what party is in control of Congress, all that will matter is whether or not we made it off this planet. Whether or not we have a strong foothold in, in the cosmos and humanity can live on and prosper and consciousness will continue to grow and expand. I, I fully support SpaceX and all their endeavors and I'm, I, I think that they should be allowed to proceed as much as, as they need to. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is David Larson, I see a number of Davids, uh, no last name on the Zoom this evening. If one of you is David Larson, uh, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Uh, following David Larson is Sanjay Matthew, who I'm not seeing on the Zoom. Uh, Ronnie Joseph, I see that your hand is still raised, I tried to unmute you and I got a message that you're using an older version of Zoom. Uh, recommend that you try to call in and we'll see if we can hear you um, through a call-in number. Okay, our next five speakers. I'm gonna put in the chat. Our Jim Chapman. Efrem Raj, Ashley Kozak, Musa Zaro and James Langley. If you would, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Uh, Jim, I see your hand raised, I'm asking you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Jim Chapman. I am the president of the Friends of the Wildlife Corridor, which is a support group for San Ana National Wildlife Refuge and Lower Rio Grande Valley National Wildlife Refuge. And my comments are on behalf of the friends. Number one, the FAA must do an environmental impact statement instead of an EA. In FAA's own regulations implementing NEPA, there are three criteria to determine if an EIS is not needed. SpaceX's massive expansion at Boca Chica clearly fails all three criteria. Number two, FAA violated NEPA by allowing the applicant SpaceX. Number two, FAA violated NEPA by allowing the applicant SpaceX to determine whether an EA or EIS was needed. NEPA is very clear that this is the permitting agency's decision. Number three, the draft EA does not contain a launch failure analysis. What is the worst case scenario if Starship Super Heavy explodes on or above the launch pad? The FAA is also required to do a safety risk analysis, a hazard risk analysis. And there, those are absent in the EA as well. There are also ten other documents that are missing from the draft EA that are referred to, but are missing from the EA. Sorry about the dogs here. NEPA is very clear that project construction cannot begin, quote, irretrievable and irreversible commitment of resources, end quote, until the environmental review is done. SpaceX has been violating this by building ahead anyway, the most egregious example being the four hundred and fifty foot integration tower. SpaceX wants to build a desalination plant with injection wells, multiple gas wells, a liquefied natural gas LNG plant, a two hundred and fifty megawatt power plant. And all of these are not described in any detail and there is no uh, evaluation of their environmental impacts. They are all in themselves significant actions that require their own environmental reviews. NEPA requires a serious evaluation of alternatives rather than just the all or nothing alternatives. One of the other alternatives that should be included is moving the testing of Super Heavy to a designated large rocket testing site such as Provo, Utah, or Stennis Air Force Base in Mississippi. The latter is where the Saturn V rocket was tested and where the Space Launch System SLS rocket is currently being tested. Another alternative should be include launching Super Heavy only from offshore or from Cape Canaveral. And we reject any plan for subsequent FAA tier reviews to allow further SpaceX expansion. This is a loophole which avoids additional environmental review and public comment. We saw this repeatedly from FAA written reevaluations from two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty. By piecemealing its massive expansion and transformation, SpaceX was able to avoid serious environmental scrutiny. FAA appeared happy to oblige. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, our next three speakers either aren't on the Zoom or have uh, let me know that they do not want to provide an oral comment this evening. Uh, so next up is Jim Langley. I see your hand raised. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, uh, quick apology to the other Jim for jumping in early. I apologize profusely. But most importantly, I really want to focus on something that uh, I'll speak on behalf of myself. I am a geologist. I have followed the environmental assessment released by SpaceX. And there is absolutely no mention of the impact or associated uh, ongoing doings with a two hundred and fifty megawatt power plant onsite as well as liquid natural gas production onsite. Both of these factors are within the environmental assessment determined to be significant, but within Cameron County, the geology simply does not support extracting natural gas locally, which means that tremendous amounts of natural gas will have to come in from oil fields approximately eighty miles to the west or they'll be drilling an extremely large number of wells onsite, probably upwards of five hundred. Uh, most importantly, none of this information is covered at all within the environmental assessment, so I stand in opposition to the uh, paperwork as it is and believe that an environmental impacts, environmental impact statement needs to be made. Uh, there's no working around the fact that these emission standards are completely unrecognized in this paperwork. It is almost virtually unprecedented. There have been no filings with the Environmental Protection Agency or any other associated agencies accordingly. And effectively SpaceX is trying to put a two hundred and fifty megawatt power for some perspective is enough to power almost a hundred thousand homes and a cryogenic methane and natural gas processing plant. Are the people of Brownsville and Port Isabel and associated communities around Boca Chica aware of the large number of trucks that are going to be coming in and out? Was that information covered in the environmental assessment? None of these things are true. And to that end, I think that it is absolutely critical that SpaceX both make it clear that this is what's going to be happening in Boca Chica. Uh, but most importantly, that the Federal Aviation Administration and others do their due diligence in ensuring that this information is spread to the community. I it's it's absolutely, in my time in geology, I've never seen anything like this. In my association with friends in environmental assessment, I, no one else has ever seen such an egregious misstep in the actual filing of proper paperwork, so that concludes my point more or less. I want to see a proper paperwork done and a proper environmental impact statement done recognizing this two hundred and fifty megawatt power plant as well as this cryogenic production facility and this natural gas facility. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next five speakers, I've just faced into the chat box, Max Braun, Sharon Wilcox, Austin Bernard, um, Hiro Nemo Reyes, Retana, and Robert Thomas. Uh, Max, I see you on the line. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Okay, I think Max just fell off the line. I do not see Sharon on the line. Um, Austin Bernard. Uh, Sherry, I see you. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right, my name is Dr. Sharon Wilcox and I am the Senior Texas Representative for Defenders of Wildlife. And I speak tonight as a representative of that organization. The SpaceX site in Cameron County, Texas sits within one of the country's most unique and diverse matrix of habitats to support extraordinarily rare, threatened, and endangered species. Ten species listed as endangered under the Endangered Species Act use the Boca Chica region surrounding the SpaceX project site, including the ocelot, jaguarundi, aplamato falcon, piping clover, red knot, and five species of sea turtle. This area is also a critical stopover site for migrating birds from multiple flyways that span the Western Hemisphere. We are deeply concerned about the direct, indirect, and cumulative impacts that are occurring from SpaceX's ongoing and expanding activities, including detrimental impacts on sensitive habitat and native vegetation, including unplanned fires, debris fall, and debris removal, documented impacts on migratory and nesting birds, and impacts on resident endangered species. We are also very concerned about the closure of this area to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Refuge Management, whose work monitoring their own refuges has been routinely impeded by formal and informal SpaceX closures. We are alarmed by evident use of the wildlife refuge as a debris field within the blast danger area and it being used for debris retrieval, which has destroyed a refuge habitat in the past and will do so in the future. For these reasons, we believe a new environmental impact statement, or EIS, is essential as the impacts of the ongoing activities at the site are and will be significant. And the EA is inadequate because it fails to take significant issues into consideration. The cumulative impacts and geographic context are absolutely essential to evaluating the current and future activities at the site that are well outside the scope of the original EIS from two thousand fourteen. The stakes are simply too high not to invest in a thorough EIS. Our unique federal refuge lands as well as adjacent state parks, beaches, and public spaces deserve this due diligence as they play significant roles in the ecological in the ecological, social, and economic integrity of the region. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ronnie Joseph, I see that you've switched computers. I'm going to ask you to unmute. We'll try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, um, I I I'm an aerospace engineer and also a lifelong environmentalist. I formerly worked for the Indian Space Program and they had the similar situation at their launch site where sea turtles and other things nesting and everything, they were able to manage the whole thing by switching off lights at night and making adjustments. Every launch site in the world needs to be on the east coast and there's always going to be issues with it. Uh, I I'm wondering how the FAA gave clearance to NASA at Cape Canaveral for all their launches. That is a much more environmentally sensitive site. Also, I would like to point out that within five miles of Boca Chica, there is a gun range, a Walmart, and it also used to be a former oil drilling site. And South Padre Island, which is just about four miles away, is completely being developed. The same beach, the same, why were in these same issues and issue when South Padre Island was being developed? I I feel that if SpaceX were an oil exploration company, there would be no questions asked about environmental impact. And also, I think the FAA is politically motivated here. The FAA is doing Boeing's bidding here. I would like to know why uh, you approved the software correction for the Boeing seven three seven MAX, leading to hundreds of people dying. What about the problem with the uh, empty fuel tanks and vapors? Three decades later, Boeing still has not fixed the problem. And what about the American dependence on Russian engines to send astronauts to the space station? We should be thankful that we have SpaceX that has given the US an alternative to not, to alternative to depending on the Russians. And if we don't do this, the Russians or the Chinese will beat us at every time to space and for the future. And if we continue to put obstacles in the path of SpaceX, I would highly recommend, I would wish that they would move to Russia, which is extending an invitation to them or to India, or even move south of the border to Mexico, would be happy, they would be happy to have a space program. So I would also like to point out, there have been a lifelong, lifelong birder uh, and an environmentalist. And I know that, you know, many of these issues that are being raised by locals about noise and space and everything would not be an issue if SpaceX were a government agency that could use eminent domain to kick people out just by being nice and offering to buy their homes and compensate them. They are being punished for doing all of that stuff. So I completely support SpaceX uh, ventures there at Boca Chica. And I request that the FAA give them the full clearance to go ahead and uh, advance humanities uh, missions in space. That's what I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Austin Bernard. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, uh, hello everyone. I just wanted to give my uh, opinions on uh, the SpaceX launch facility here in Boca Chica, Texas. I have lived in Brownsville, Texas my entire life and uh, growing up here in the valley. Many people have never really had a sense of hope towards the future. And this is really the first time ever where I've seen my community I guess fully embrace the fact that there is like a new dawn approaching humanity, whether that is space exploration or just hu- uh, expanding or civilization to another world entirely. And I find it really awe inspiring and just honestly beautiful. And I totally support SpaceX and their endeavors wholeheartedly as a local and I'm very excited for their presence here. That's uh, all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is um, Jero Nemo Reyes Retana, who I'm not seeing on the Zoom under that name, but if you're on and would like to provide a comment, please raise your hand. Um, as well as Robert Thomas. Who I'm also not seeing on the Zoom. Okay, Jero Nemo, one moment. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hey, hi, my name is Jeronimo Reyes Retana. I'm an uh, a notist and a researcher. I've been working on the, on the Texas-Tamaulipas border for more than five years now. And so, after reading and studying the IES uh, published in in two thousand fourteen and the PEA published in two thousand twenty one, it is clear that the transboundary environmental and social impact resulting from the extremely intense acoustic energy produced by the engines of SpaceX launchers during liftoffs, landing, and static fire tests is treated in a reductionist manner that cannot connote the unilateral essence characterizing the US-Mexico border dynamics. The two thousand twenty one programmatic environmental assessment deliberately chooses not to take into consideration the existence of several Tamaulipas settlements located within the FAA, the limited region of impact. Moreover, the document exposes the lack of transboundary concern by not mentioning the name of any Mexican authority looking after the case besides never stating SpaceX intentions to build a horizontal dialogue with the neighboring Mexican communities, which are primarily rudimentary settlements impoverished and affected by a highly problematic socio-political situation connected to a state of ultra violence resulting from an ongoing war on drugs that has seriously affected the social threat. And that now the same communities will have to live up to the shocking sound waves of Starship Super Heavy. That being said, I think it's important that SpaceX Launch Facility at Boca Chica, Texas, takes the transboundary effects of an infrastructure project of these kinds seriously. It is important that it takes a deep look into the social political context and acts according to it in order to be coherent with an agenda that supposedly looks forward to connecting us as a species and not to empowering the social asymmetries of a capitalist and globalist order by worsening the cultural tensions of a geopolitical region that already lives under a dire situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next five speakers are Arol Plata, Mary Branch, Gilberto Estrella, uh, Simon Van Dyke, and Joshua Collins. Arol Plata, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Well, uh, I I don't have much for further to add. Essentially, it's humanity moving off the planet. And it's very important for us to do that. And uh, no matter where it's constructed, uh, it's going to have some impacts which we can mitigate. And um, yeah, I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mary Branch, I'm going to ask you to unmute. Mary Branch.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Finally, thank you. My name is Mary Angela Branch. I own a residence in Port Isabel, Cameron County, Texas. As a board member representing Save RGV, a nonprofit community organization, I am here to voice our opposition to the draft PEA on SpaceX Boca Chica. In reading the draft, the direct, indirect, and cumulative impacts from the project's plan to test launch the Super Heavy, a rocket which is approximately eleven hundred percent more powerful than the existing starship, have not been fully or adequately analyzed or addressed to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act. There are at minimum eleven plans, one letter of agreement, two analyses, one communication process, one data package, and the identification of emergency response team that are referenced and alluded to in the draft, but neither are provided in the draft either by description, exhibit, appendix, or footnote. We ask that these documents be provided in order to review and comment on their compliance and efficacy. Refusing to provide them goes against the public's best interest and safety. Further, a new FAA launch failure analysis is missing and must be conducted and reviewed by all cooperating and affected agencies, municipalities, and counties, as well as the general public. We also ask that an emergency response plan be provided in cooperation with the FAA, the Coast Guard, local EMS, first responders, and hospitals, complete with training operation manuals, identification of teams to be trained and maintained, as well as evacuation routes, shelters, and long-term care of evacuees and injured in the event of a worst-case scenario. We also want to know who will bear the cost to fund these emergency operations and teams. We also ask that the data for section two point one point two of the draft PEA titled Launch Vehicle be provided per the FAA's own life titled Launch Vehicle be provided per the FAA's own licensing code, Title fourteen, Chapter three, Subchapter three, Sections four, five oh point four three, and four, five oh point four five. Additionally, the scope and expansion of this project described in the draft calls for construction and operation of a two hundred and fifty megawatt power plant, a pipeline to carry natural gas to a natural gas pretreatment facility, a methane liquefier, also known as the Liquid Natural Gas Plant, oil and gas drilling and production industry, a solar farm and a desalination plant.
Thirty seconds.
None of these are addressed sufficiently in the draft PEA, nor were they addressed, analyzed, or even mentioned as elements of future design and implementation in the original two thousand fourteen environmental impact statement, which renders this draft invalid. In conclusion, we deem this draft PEA insufficient, inadequate, and lacking scrutiny, and ask that it be rejected on its face and request that a full environmental impact statement be conducted instead. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Gilberto Estrella. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Um, I would like to speak in Spanish because my English is not good.
Okay, uh we will bring our translator over and so she can translate your comments as you as you give them. Pamela, can you please come over to the English line to translate our next commenter?
Okay.
Pamela, Pamela, are you ready? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Yo, yo formo parte del gobierno del estado de Tamaulipas en el área de medio ambiente. Represento a la Secretaria de Medio Ambiente y quiero considerar algunos factores de impacto que puedan afectar en materia ambiental derivados de este proyecto. Algunos de estos factores son la contaminación por ruido, los decibeles y la distancia que puede causar daño, el impacto en aguas, en islas, y en este, en humedales. También la época de migración. Hay que hacer énfasis en mover los lanzamientos y no afectar la época de migración de aves acuáticas o aves terrestres, ni la época de migración de la mariposa monarca. Okay, es importante este sitio porque es un corredor biológico y hay que tomar en cuenta todas las especies que, que transitan por esta zona. Otra, otra. Se debe establecer un umbral, un umbral de recepción de partículas que puedan surgir debido a las operaciones de pruebas y lanzamientos. Y también el umbral de impacto en caso de alguna explosión. Continuo?
No, she's still translating.
Okay, entonces es importante que nos pudiesen dar una copia de algún documento que contenga todos estos puntos expectaciones y las mitigaciones por parte de SpaceX, así como la seguridad pública que también se ve involucrada. Y eso sería todo. Muchas gracias.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Um, so ladies and gentlemen, if it's helpful, when we have a translated comment in the global icon at the bottom, at the bottom of your screen, uh if you click on the global icon and you click English or Spanish, you would be able to go to the English channel and hear the translation, um even if you're usually hearing the presentation tonight in English. Okay, our next speaker is Simon Van Dyke. Simon, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
This is Simon.
Yep, go ahead. You have three minutes.
I appreciate the time. I also appreciate that the FAA is using technology to allow maximum number of people to participate. Um, my name again is Simon Van Dyke. I'm a Texas resident, been following SpaceX for many years. Um, at first critically and uh but more so after following and seeing all the different steps they've taken uh and Elon Musk's associated companies um to prioritize the environment, prioritize maintaining the resources we have on Earth. Um, I am in full support of um the FAA granting the CEA and allowing SpaceX to move on. Um, I, I also believe it's, it's kind of interesting that um those in opposition tonight seem to be uh quite, um quite prepared. Um, sounds like uh they had teams of people working um and.
And in, in this situation, I think that um although some of the concerns are valid and we do need to uh review and see what is uh, what's out there and uh what needs to be protected. I believe that SpaceX has shown a a willingness and a desire to do that and to mitigate as much potential damage as possible. And I would like to see the uh, uh, I would like to see the authorization granted and uh allow them to move forward in an effort to uh to continue moving the, the dial scientifically. I think a lot of people end up uh, sorry, end up negatively thinking of, well, why are we leaving Earth? Why are we, why don't we just better our community in our area instead of trying to go somewhere else? And I think what a lot of people forget is that um the space race and so much of what we've done to leave Earth has created scientific advancements and materials and ideas that have greatly benefited those who are on Earth. And uh we've missed that over the last few decades and I'd like to see that come back. So I appreciate the time, appreciate the opportunity, and uh look forward to the FAA granting the CEA. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Joshua Collins. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right, so I, again, as several people tonight have said that they, I'm not Texas resident, so don't really have much stake in this, but again, um and as a lot of, as I believe it was Ronnie mentioned with the issue in regards to the wildlife as at Cape, as with seeing Cape Canaveral, a large port or large area surrounding Cape Canaveral is is wildlife and no one really seemed to care about or even today cares about the wildlife there, so if everyone, we launch rockets out of there all the time and no one cares about the wildlife impact theirs. And in regards to beach, the beach access, just because that, there is the one road now, but there's no reason that SpaceX or the county can't say, okay, we'll, we'll build another access road further down. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, folks, we're gonna take a quick five-minute break uh to give both our court reporter and our translator an opportunity to get a quick drink of water and have a quick break. Um, and when we return at seven oh five, we will resume hearing oral comments. Uh, the next five speakers are Rob Patterson, Douglas Krickmer, Marcus Mobius, N Shahul Hamid, and Luke Fuston. And I've put those names in the chat. Again, we'll resume the meeting at seven oh five central time. Thank you. Okay, I just need confirmation that our court reporter and our translator are back. If you would just send me a chat message that you have returned and are ready, we will resume the meeting. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back from the break. We will continue hearing um oral comments. Our next speaker is Rob Patterson, who I am not seeing on the Zoom, followed by Douglas Krickmer, who I am also not seeing on Zoom, uh Marcus Mobius, I see you, please uh, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Uh, thank you. My name is Marcus Mobius. Uh, I'm from Minnaba, Michigan, um speaking for myself. Um, I'm an immigrant to this country. I came twenty-five years ago. And SpaceX is exactly the kind of company or reason I, I came to the US in the first place because I think the US is sort of unique in giving rise to uh these amazing uh companies and programs. Um, and I don't think you can find this anywhere else in the world. Um, I also a father. Uh, we have three children, uh two girls and a boy. And all of them are fascinated by SpaceX. And this is not something that be encouraged. I mean, they sort of got excited about that um because they're interested in astronomy and um uh, you know, we're planning as a family to visit Boca Chica and see these, these rockets ourselves. Um, so um, I'm excited. I mean, I'm too old to sort of switch into aerospace, but I'm excited for my children who I believe, um, you know, it's not just SpaceX which is exciting, it's also exciting all the other technologies that Starship and SpaceX is enabling. For example, their Starlink um that can provide internet service to like neglected and rural communities across the world. Um, which is going to change these people's lives. Um, there are countless other companies which are gonna be enabled by having a cheap access to space. And finally, I also want to like mention that, you know, um, having cheap access to space actually for the first time, for example, provides us um things which previously were only science fiction, like for example, defending um us, our planet against meteors, for example. I mean, this is something that NASA follows. It's a non-negligible probability that this is gonna happen. Um, every year there's a point one chance, percent chance that a meteor can strike some city on Earth and uh destroyed, for example. And so having, you know, NASA doesn't have the capability to actually do anything against that. And the only entity probably in the world which will have this uh uh capability is SpaceX and Starship. And, you know, certainly an impact of such an event will be much bigger than uh the impact SpaceX is gonna have on the local environment in Boca Chica, which from your presentation seemed manageable. Um, so I think, you know, you should really in your evaluation look beyond just Boca Chica and see all the beneficial effects SpaceX can have and Starship can have on the rest of the world. Um, on the rest of the world's environment. So I hope that you will find imaginative solutions uh that will not slow walk this, this project to death. Because I think it has amazing, amazing opportunities.
Thirty seconds.
For, for, for all of us. For, for, for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is N Shahul Hamid, who I'm not seeing on the Zoom, and then Luke Huston. Luke, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, my name is Luke Huston. I'm only representing myself. I'd like to say thanks to the FAA folks for organizing this, for benefiting us with your public service. I'd like to mention, for the public record, for those who are sincerely concerned about the environment, you know, potential environmental impacts, three reasons why this program seems likely to be good for the environment. First, in general, just something that other comments have mentioned as well, that space launch facilities so far seem like they're good, not bad for the environment. You can pan over on Google Maps to Florida and see the impact over there. It just looks like a sea of green, which kind of makes sense, like you have a small rocket launch pad, but then you have this much bigger area where you can't build anything or do anything because a rocket might fall on it. Secondly, in Boca Chica specifically, it kind of seems like the more activity that they actually do, the better it is for the environment, because their activities are on this tiny little area. Every time they have a launch or a hop or something like that, you know, maybe 30 acres or so, something like that, that's being impacted by those. But, uh, like thousands of acres get a rest from the vehicle-intensive human recreation. You know, people are coming up with their cars and driving on the beach and so forth. And none of that happens during those closures. And then the last bit of good news for the environment is something else that's been alluded to a couple of times by some other comments. If Starship works, we might not need to throw away most of a rocket every single time we go to space. Imagine if an airplane, you take off with the whole airplane, but then you throw most of it away. You only land the cockpit portion. You've thrown away this massive manufactured thing. What's the carbon footprint of throwing away that that complex manufactured thing every single time you use it? That's just nuts. And so up until this point, and you know, right now, access to space has been just crazy wasteful. So if Starship works, you know, each launch can reuse the vehicle and be way more environmentally friendly. I'm not saying humanity won't figure out how to mess that up. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure we'll figure it out. But anyway, the Starship program itself seems to enable some real wins for the environment. That's both locally in Boca Chica and then in the terms of that bigger picture. Thanks again for putting this on.
Thank you for your comments. And Luke, thank you for logging off and logging back in so I could easily identify you. I appreciate that. The next five speakers are David Wright, JJ Silk, William Rosen, Darius Trutna, and Michael O'Halloran. The only one I'm seeing on Zoom this evening is Michael O'Halloran. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right. Thanks a bunch. My name is Mike O'Halloran, or Michael O'Halloran, for the court reporter, O apostrophe H A L L O R A N, if that does you a favor. I'm a member of the public and I don't represent any organizations. Thanks to the FAA for hosting these meetings and for the presentation. Thanks to the people at SpaceX and the FAA for the work done on the preliminary EA so far. As a member of the public, I'd like to state my concerns as follows. I'd like for the FAA and SpaceX to be sure that any and all potential oil or natural gas wells in the vicinity of Boca Chica and their consequences be accurately assessed in these reviews. There have been multiple people making the claim that any fossil fuel generation is not being accurately accounted for in this EA. I'm unsure of the validity of these claims, but I would hate to see progress with these reviews or progress at the build site itself be set back by any missed steps. As far as the environment goes, it seems to me that SpaceX has a good plan in place to mitigate the vast majority of environmental effects from the build and test sites. I feel this is to a degree that more than satisfies me as a member of the public and someone who cares a lot about the environment. I feel it is also important to note that the Starship super heavy launch architecture shows great promise in greatly increasing the scope of space access and space technology. There are many academic studies that indicate the value of space materials within the inner solar system alone are valued in the quadrillions of dollars. Increasing access to space could drastically reduce the environmental effects that industry has on our planet in general, and it allows us to start utilizing resources in space. In the very long term, small environmental effects at Boca Chica may end up allowing for drastically less environmental damage worldwide. Starship and super heavy are clearly worth the gamble, so to speak. As far as the economy, I'd like to point out that space technology will likely be the next sector that will revolutionize the way we live. Given this, it is very important that we continue being the world leader in this sector. We have the opportunity to set the tone of what science, space resource utilization, and space exploration looks like over the next century. Starship is our clearest path towards remaining a leading voice for responsible space travel. I would recommend, as a member of the public, that the FAA and SpaceX continue with all due diligence with these reviews and move forward quickly so that Starship can enter the next phase of its development safely. And I think I'm, I think I'm good.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, our next five speakers are David Coleman, Sirwan Amini, Stephen Roberts, Noe Gonzalez, and Michael Riola. If you would, please raise your hand to identify that you're on the Zoom and I will call on you. David Coleman, I'm gonna ask you to unmute. David Coleman, you are unmuted. Okay, David, if you are speaking, we are unable to hear you. Okay, our next speaker is Sirwan Amini, A M I N Y, which I'm not seeing on the Zoom. Stephen Roberts, I see a Stephen. If that's Stephen Roberts, please use the raise hand feature to, so I can identify you. Noe Gonzalez, I'm also not seeing on Zoom. Michael Riola. I have a number of Michaels on the Zoom, so if one of you is Michael Riola, R I O L A, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Okay, I'm gonna place the next five speakers in the chat box. Which are Dwayne Rasmussen, Claudia Hernandez, Cameron Sissel, Richard Raimondo, and VJ Axel. If you're on the mute, if you're on the Zoom, excuse me, please raise your hand so I can identify you. I see a Richard, but there's no last name. If you are Richard Raimondo, R A I M O N D O, please raise your hand so I can identify you. And VJ Axel, I'm also not seeing on the Zoom this evening. Again, folks, if you've joined under a different name, or perhaps you're using your son or daughter or spouse's computer or roommates, and you're not under the name that you registered, I won't be able to identify you. So please send me a chat message if I have skipped you because I'm not able to see your name. Okay, moving on. Our next five speakers I'll place into the chat. Okay, Gil Hugh, Michelle Beaker, Ian Winarski, Eric Cohen, and James Hege. If you would, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Those are our next five speakers. Gil, I see your hand. Let me ask you to unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Great. My statement is, I believe that the programmatic environmental assessment is the correct path forward. The launch site has already gone through a EIS. And as I look at the guidance in the Office of Environmental Quality, this vehicle launch site clearly fits in the perfect category for a programmatic environmental assessment, which will cover the broad and flexible approach that best supports the development of this critical launch vehicle for the United States. It also allows for follow-up relevant reviews as issues of the site goes forward. I do, would ask that the FAA use all speed necessary to go forward with a finding of no significant impact for the site, as this site is critical for national security reasons, as well as clear economic development reasons. The site has been happening under the closely watched and diagrammed media presence. We are teaching our competitors how to do a heavy lift reusable rocket, which is just fantastic overall. But if the United States is not able to go forward with this rocket, it would have amazing, terrible impacts to national security and economic development if a non-friendly country such as China or Russia were to copy the rocket. So I urge the FAA to stick with its PEA, the preliminary programmatic environmental assessment process, and urge for the speedy finding of a finding of no significant impact. And I believe that the impacts of the environment will actually be improved as it has been long proven record.
Thirty seconds.
By NASA, that the technological innovation going forward will have a positive impact on the environment. And also keep, make sure that other competing uses of the area remains wildlife due to rocket uses. Thank you very much to the FAA, and I appreciate listening.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is Michelle Beaker, who I'm not seeing on the Zoom, then Ian Winarski, Eric Cohen, and James Hege, none of which I'm seeing on Zoom this evening. If you've joined under a different name, or perhaps you only have your first name, send me a chat message to identify you and I will come back to hear your comments. Okay, our next five speakers this evening from our preregistration are Peter Foster, Ellen Tima, Mark Proctor, John Nahay, and Soriami Reddy Gangarredi. Again, I apologize if I mispronounce your name. Peter, I see you. Your hand is raised. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, thanks for having me on. I'm not, I'm speaking personally. I'm not associated with any group. In fact, I work for a healthcare company that supplies computer systems for rural hospitals. So it's about as far away as you can get from this. I recently visited the launch site in Boca Chica and want to share my observations and bring some common man perspective to the impact of the space facility. I'm a private pilot. I flew in a very small plane, but I was able to take some photographs as I flew into Brownsville by way of Boca Chica. And I have sent those in, which I'd like to get added somehow as part of my comments. I sent those in an email along with my comments. But the thing that struck me was the vastness of the wetlands and the minuscule presence of SpaceX's two facilities there. And looking at the application, even filling in the areas that they presently aren't using, it just struck me at how small geographical impact their facilities and their proposed facilities have on the vast expanse of wetlands. I appreciate the folks that are concerned about the wildlife, but I only point to Cape Kennedy and Cape Canaveral, where we've got 60 years of experience. And having been there a good number of times, there are nests of bald eagles that have been there for over 50 years. A great deal of other wildlife, including a lot of alligators that don't seem to mind the occasional noise. And there you've got at least five different launch companies and much more activity. In terms of wildlife, again, there's enough area where the wildlife can move, if indeed it's bothered by the minimal activity that's there. In addition, there's, it's been mentioned SpaceX actually helped during Snowmageddon, as we call it down here, by supplying backup power to facilities where they helped also in rescuing. I think the press articles were over 4,500 sea turtles. Those you can Google. I've made references in my written remarks. I'd like to see you
Thirty seconds.
Urge you, urge the FAA to approve the request by SpaceX. And I would urge the folks that are very concerned about the wildlife to take a look at the pictures that I sent in. It's just amazing how little SpaceX's facilities will impact. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ellen Tima. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I've sent several letters and all of them are against SpaceX. I live here 12 miles from the site. And I want to go through a few things that have endangered my life and my husband's life. Number one, we are denied access to our home during launches, space activity, whatever they decide to call it. We are 12 miles away, which is further than Port Isabel or South Padre. SpaceX decides they're going to move equipment down the road. So what do they do? They cut my power. I have no internet. I have no phone. My husband is 79 and diabetic. I am also have mutual, have many hip implants and am disabled. So if an emergency occurs, I have no way of contacting emergency services because we have no internet. We have no cell phone. There, there's nothing out here. The deputies and constables harass us while trying to get home, but meanwhile, give a pass to all the cement trucks and contractors. That's inexcusable. The 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 traffic on Boca Chica Highway or Highway four has become a slaughter zone and is very dangerous for people driving. I've actually had a Tesla tailgate me through the S curves on the refuge portion of the highway and then pass on that same S curve with a cement truck coming. Law enforcement doesn't do enough. They come out, it stops for about four or five hours, but then it's right back to SpaceX highway. The number of animals that are slaughtered on the road every day by this excessive traffic is inexcusable. Caracaras, buzzards, and other birds of prey fall victim because they're feeding on the carrier. Since we've been here since 2002, I used to be at regularly see ocelots and jaguarundae. But since 20
Thirty seconds.
Since 2018, we haven't seen anything. Nobody said anything about the LNG plant. Nobody said anything about the LNG plant they're going to put right on the refuge and state lines, nor is there any addressment of the ICBMs that they're going to be launching and impacting Mexico, my neighbor. The people that come out leave feces and garbage on the refuge because they want a front row seat to this monstrosity.
That's three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next three speakers are Mark Proctor, John Nahay, and Suryami Reddy, none of which I'm seeing on the Zoom this evening. If you are on under a different name, please send me a chat message so I can identify you. Moving on, our next five speakers I placed into the chat, Alex Munoz, Kate Leon, Charlie Cox, who I believe we've already heard from, NPR VTP, and David Pacuz. Alex Munoz. I see a few Alexes on. If one of you is Alex Munoz, M-U-N-O-Z, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Kate Leon, I am not seeing on the Zoom this evening. NPR VTP, I'm not seeing on. And David Pacuz, P-A-C-K-O-U-Z. I'm also not seeing on the Zoom. If you're on, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Okay, our next five speakers I'm gonna place into the chat. Timothy Jarvis, Mary Jarvis, David King, Pearl Smith, and Kenneth Do. Okay, Timothy or Mary Jarvis, I'm not sure which one this is. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Please be sure to state your full name for the record. Timothy Jarvis, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Do we have voice connection?
There you go. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, this is Timothy Jarvis, PhD scientist. And I'll be speaking for my wife also, Mary Jarvis, PhD scientist. First on our agenda is the fact that we have provided comments. We have provided comments twice before on the SpaceX site, once on 21st of January 2021, again on the 18th of April 2021. We have received no acknowledgement of those comments, nor have we received resolution to those comments. Therefore, this, as you can understand, public comment in addressing of those comments in a professional manner is a cornerstone of NEPA. Therefore, is defines a new low watermark in the competence of dealing with NEPA by FAA. Given that, I think any work on this programmatic EA shouldn't be immediately halted, as should any work at this SpaceX site until these comments are acknowledged and addressed to the satisfaction of the authors. Moving on, number two, in the programmatic EA, they have used in section 3.15.4.3 the word sparsely populated area to justify higher risk from their operation. I must take total exception to this because the Constitution of the United States, nor our legal system, either one, define our rights by population density. If one person out there should have the same protection as if you were placing this thing in downtown Boston, this underscores the FAA's lack of understanding of the Constitution of the United States or our legal system. This alone
Thirty seconds.
doing the whole operation. Moving on, number three. They often refer to the Fonzie of the SpaceX 2014 EIS. We have tried for seven years to find a copy of this, either in paper form or electronic. And I must say, there have been more sightings of Bigfoot than there have been sightings of this EIS. It is not
Time. That's three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is David King. David, I'm gonna ask you to unmute. David King.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. I believe that the SpaceX program is a wonderful program. It has definitely allowed the United States dependency to go into the International Space Station and not rely on our adversaries, which is Russia, for that dependency and has solidified our ability to act on our own accord in terms of using our own space technology to have access to space and even bring people up there. In terms of the environment, I think it's essential. SpaceX continues to rapidly test its products as it has shown very little environmental impacts in the area in terms of the fish. I mean, it don't seem like there's substantial evidence that proves that it has bombarded the environment in very catastrophic ways. So I think the FAA should continue to allow it to pursue this goes at the pace that it is pursuing it. In addition.
David, are you still there? If you're still speaking, we can't hear you.
National security, I think SpaceX as an asset of company too. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I don't know what you didn't hear. But the last aspect that I want to consider is the national security aspect. For them to allow us to have access in space or to space, I think is good. I mean, because the way I consider it is if our adversaries were to, I don't know, Lucas or something, we can forget about the wildlife and everything else in the surrounding area. So I think it's essential that this program is continuing to develop at the pace that it is. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Pearl Smith. Pearl, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I just want to thank SpaceX tonight, and I also want to thank the FAA for all that you guys are doing. Our goal here is to become multi-planetary. So I'm gonna read you a scripture out of the Bible. It says, and this was from Genesis. It says, "The fourth day of eternity in God's creation, God said, 'Let there be lights in the dome of the sky.' He separated the day from the night. He wanted the lights to mark the seasons, the days, the years, and he wanted the lights to illuminate the earth. He also made one greater light to govern the day and one lesser light to govern the night.'" How can we see what lights are in the sky or what are beyond the lights of the fourth day of creation if we don't allow SpaceX to go into outer space? So I just want to bring this to everyone's attention that we are not created for the earth. The earth is created for us human beings. That's why we were created on the sixth day and dominion was given to us over the entire earth. And for everyone coming out who thinks that this is a monstrosity and because of buzzards being killed in the streets, those buzzards are going to be killed regardless of what vehicles are on the streets. So it doesn't matter if it's the traffic that's for SpaceX or not. Another thing to consider is when you're giving timeframes of your internet not working, your phone not working, please state the timeframe there so that we can know, like, is it just a couple seconds? Is it just a couple minutes versus is it hours? You know, so please be specific when you're stating that you're having an issue, you know, in Texas. And I'm looking forward to us becoming multi-planetary. Thank you, Elon Musk. Thank you, SpaceX. Thank you for all that you do. God bless.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is Kenneth Do. Ken, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ken Do. I'm a longtime resident of South Pottery Island, and it's been a great alarm that I've watched the evolution of the SpaceX launch facilities and rocket operations based at Boca Chica, Texas. These operations are conducted less than one mile from a beach where endangered sea turtles nest. It's also adjacent to part of the Los Palmas Wildlife Management Unit, next to Laguna Madre Bay, next to the Rio Grande Valley National Wildlife Refuge, Boca Chica State Park, Brazos Island State Park, and only a short distance from Laguna Atascosa National Wildlife Refuge and the Pottery Island National Seashore, which is the longest stretch of undeveloped barrier island on earth. The SpaceX facility is literally in the middle of land and waters protected by the state of Texas and the United States federal government for the biodiversity and habitats. Some of the flora and fauna are unique to the area, and some are critically endangered. The number of species potentially impacted by these operations, not just including launches, is innumerable. It would be nearly impossible to imagine an environmentally more sensitive area to conduct such operations. I personally witnessed three SpaceX launches from South Pottery Island several miles away, and can report that the noise is so loud it can be felt in my chest. It is unknown how wildlife such as endangered nesting turtles and birds and other marine and terrestrial life could be impacted by 21 more launches per year and ongoing construction support operations. To those who mention things like, you know, we can build another road to the beach, they're obviously not familiar with the geography of the area. It's, it would be impossible to build another road to access Boca Chica Beach due to the Rio Grande River and the Mexican border. Another point I'd like to make is that in Texas, our access to the beaches is protected under the Constitution. The state protects our access to the beaches, and that's meant to be unfettered. You can't close, you're not allowed to close roads and restrict people's access to beaches 20 or 30 or 50 times a year. So I urge the FAA and the Environmental Protection Agency to halt further launch operations involving a Boca Chica. They're looking at environmental devastation potentially on a vast scale there as they continue to build out more and more operations. We're talking about building the largest heavy lift rocket ever been developed by man. And anybody who lives in the area will understand the environmental impact is massive. There are many other places where these operations can be conducted that are not environmentally sensitive. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, folks, the next five speakers are Alexander Korshonov, Renaud Jansen, Robert Nixon, Jose Davila, and Stuart Diamond. And I posted those five names in the chat. The only one I'm seeing on the Zoom this evening is Stuart Diamond. Stuart, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name's Stuart Diamond. Actually, speaking in a private capacity at this point, I am a resident of South Pottery Island. I believe that a full environmental impact statement should be necessitated. The original EIS did not contemplate what Elon Musk and SpaceX are doing or planning and planning to do. A major concern of mine is beach closures. If they're allowed 500 hours of beach closures, that's equal to 20 days a year. Now SpaceX doesn't consider an eight-hour beach closure a full day. So it multiplied by numerous days. So the 20 days is far exceeded. 800 hours is equal to over a month. And as I said, if it's eight hours a day, that's 100 days according to SpaceX. I'm concerned about the environmental and endangered species damage, the desalination plant, the natural gas plant, the LNG plant. These all have major consequences on the environment. Now, as a property owner, my house is my largest investment and basically my retirement. I contacted my insurance agent. I have windstorm, I have flood, everything that we need for a hurricane. I asked her if we were covered by any damage from SpaceX. She informed me that unless debris hit my house, I was not covered. If my windows get blown out, if hotels' windows get blown out, if there's structural damage, the FAA says it's not their responsibility. It's a responsibility of SpaceX. But it doesn't say that SpaceX will pay or be responsible for making everybody whole. This could also cause a total economic shutdown of South Pottery Island, which is a tourist resort. If the windows at the major hotels get blown out with the supply problems that we're having in the United States right now and worldwide, there are months backlog on getting windows. The footprint of SpaceX has increased incredibly over the past six months, and I wonder if it's all been permitted. This will be bigger than the Saturn V rocket. I believe that SpaceX needs to play by the rules.
Thirty seconds.
One of the last explosions, I live approximately eight miles from the launch site. The last explosion debris fell at my house. It was insulation, but it fell out my house, and it fell another two and a half miles up the island. I believe that the massive scale and potential environmental and structural damage necessitates a full EIS. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, folks, I've pasted the names of the next five speakers on the preregistration list into the chat. Elena Nicoletta Boussois, Mykola Donyev, Keith Storma, Mary Elizabeth Holman, and Ren McCree. Elena, I see you on. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. And my name is Elena Nicoletta Boussoyu, and I'm speaking on my own tonight. I would like to raise my voice in favor for SpaceX and the Super Heavy Mission because I think this is just the beginning, and we need to investigate. Well, we need to have more data. And investigation is also and will be forever the path that we need to walk in. There are a lot of things that we still have to discover. And if we do not investigate, if this request for SpaceX is not approved, we are not going to discover those ways. I think since during all these 19 years since SpaceX appeared, we have experimented a lot of advance. And not just that, we have experimented happiness, and we have learned a lot with them. I think and I feel with all my heart that we need to still going with this story. We still, we need. And actually it was a logical step in our history as a humanity to go to space. And make life multi-planetary. I really love what SpaceX and Elon Musk are doing. And I'm on for this project. And I would like to ask you to please approve SpaceX requests and any requests that they have. Because this is just the beginning. SpaceX has shown the world. That impossible becomes possible and there is a brilliant and a beautiful future by their side. I'd like to have this request approval for them. Thank you very much and have a beautiful night.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Keith Stormo. I'm going to ask you to unmute Keith.
Hello, my name is Keith Stormo. And I am an individual and I'd like to give my wholehearted recommendation for the FAA. And to determine a non-significance. So that there is no need for a complete environmental impact statement. The 2014 environmental impact statement was based on the Falcon Heavy. Which is a liquid oxygen kerosene rocket. And the starship and the booster are both powered by liquid oxygen and methane. And with methane being a. That evaporating chemical. It will be, it would be much less of an environmental hazard. If there were an accident, the methane would dissipate where the kerosene would, would be remaining a liquid in land on the. The ground, the ocean and all the surrounding area. Leaving a much higher and more hazardous environmental impact statement. So since that 2014 was approved. For the Falcon Heavy, the additional risk is, is much less for this. Um, current impact statement. Um, this draft PEA. Keep in mind that. A risk-based approach, it does matter what the population density is. If the population density is much less, then from a risk-based approach. There is less risk if there's less population in the area where the event is occurring. With it being very near the coastline and heading out over the ocean. There, there will be very little risk to the people that are to the west or to the north. And that has been addressed in this draft PEA. So again, I would recommend the determination of non-significance for this draft PEA be approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mary Holman. Mary, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
How?
Mary, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, you can hear me. I'm sorry. I don't know how this works.
No worries. You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Mary Elizabeth Holman. I'm a longtime resident of Brownsville. I go out to Boca Chica Beach with my family, as I do to South Pottery Island also. The SpaceX rockets are too big and the impacts could be too negative. Not to carefully analyze the and mitigate the risk. The potential for a launch failure and the environmental and negative social impacts are very real. Because of this, I'm asking the FFA, FAA to conduct a full environmental impact statement. That includes a launch failure analysis instead of the programmatic environmental assessment that is now being considered. Thank you very much for taking my comment.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ren McCree. Ren, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, this is Ren McCree. I'm speaking as an individual from Alabama, so I'm not a part of the Brownsville area. You can still my name by R E N M C R E E. I'm in full support of granting SpaceX the launch license in question here. However, due to two main items mentioned in the draft PEA, I have concern. I would like more requirements be added to SpaceX first on the emissions related to the proposed natural gas power plant. And second, the natural gas liquefaction plant. The estimates given are lower than reasonable for equipment of this size. Also, due to the proximity to protected wetlands, emissions preparations in place of. There needs to be preparations in place, particularly if an accident were to occur. While operating these facilities to prevent spills of petroleum byproducts into the wetlands. Thank you. This concludes my statement.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, folks, our next five speakers. Actually going to put the next seven. Um, these are the last seven that I have on our pre-registration list. Uh, which are Eric Hound, Stephen. Cry, William Stewart, Moki Hanna Berry, Josetta Cruz, Kenneth Teague and Mary Branch. Uh, Eric, I see you on the Zoom. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, uh, my name is Eric. Um, I've been paying particularly close attention to this project um for the past few weeks. I've been writing about it quite a bit and um I have a background in environmental engineering. Um, and risk assessment, process safety. I've been at it for over a decade. I've worked for oil and gas companies. I've worked for pipelines. Um, and I just wanted to make the comment that I have never in my career seen such a sloppy document. That is full of absolutely misleading, inaccurate. Um, intentionally obfuscated information in it. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm, I am actually aghast that this document was even passed by the FAA. The fact that a private contractor hired by the FAA allowed 11 employees from that company that is ICF. That icon you see in the background that is a publicly traded company. Their management has now for weeks looked the other way. While 11 of their employees signed off on a fraudulent document. Um, everyone who has looked at or reported this has been gaslighted by SpaceX and FAA. In due believing that this was some sort of uh given. This project was not about the rockets. Um, that was the um, the stated reason for it. But if you look at the document itself, this is a large oil and gas operation. It is a utility power plant, including a 250 megawatt power plant, which is definitionally. A major source of pollution under the PSD regulations of the Clean Air Act Amendment of 1977. Um, it is one of the first source types that EPA pointed out as a uh item of concern. And of note, um, you will note that TCEQ nor EPA were contacted during this PEA development. Um, there are unbelievable amounts of errors, missteps, miscalculations. Um, equipment is named things that are not industry standard, which is a violation of the plain language requirements of NEPA. There is, this is a gas plant. This is a gas processing plant. This is an LNG unit and there's a.
Thirty seconds.
There's going to be a pipeline that will be needed that is not mentioned. All of this stuff was let off intentionally. ICF, the company, these people who reviewed it, they all know this. FAA management knows this and they want it to happen anyway. So everyone listening to this, you have been, uh, you've watched a oil and gas development. From drilling, fracking, production, pipeline, refining. And now combustion in a utility sized power plant that has been green.
Three minutes.
It is unreal and this, this ICF needs to resign from the project.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, our next speaker is Stephen Cry. Stephen, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, my name is Stephen Cry. I'm 65. I've lived in Texas since 1975. And I represent myself. Hey, I understand the many concerns surrounding SpaceX's operations at Boca Chica. And I don't want to lightly dismiss them. I'm an outdoorsman, I'm a mountaineer, a beach lover, I love wildlife photography. I'm a Texas history buff. Property rights are our most important right. But I'm convinced that SpaceX can manage these problems associated with their operations at Boca Chica. Mr. Musk will not spare the expense to make this safe for people and wildlife. He'll bring to bear the best minds and technology available. And I know some people doubt it, but he's got the money for it. He'll make people whole if their property is damaged. SpaceX operations can and will coexist with the area wildlife, with residents and historical sites. Remember wildlife and people are resilient. SpaceX operations already benefit the local economy. It inspires children to pursue STEM careers. I don't know if y'all saw the school buses that came out with all the grateful kids and teachers this week. The earth is our beautiful, beloved home. It's always going to be our first love, my first love. But we all know the universe is a dangerous place. Civilization is only one asteroid impact or one Carrington class solar event away from collapse. You know, let's put those dangers aside. They're probably not going to happen soon. But who hasn't dreamed of traveling to other worlds and beyond? But SpaceX is doing represents the next highly sustainable step in humankind's grandest adventure. So let's all do what we can to make this dream a reality. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Josette Cruz. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Okay. Can I start or?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Um, my name is Josette, you know, Rosa Cruz. And I am a member of the Carisocomicurro tribe of Texas and the South Texas Environmental Justice Network. FYI, this project was built on our land. And just as there has been massive opposition to projects like the liquid fracked gas facilities. Such as Anova LNG, Rio Grande LNG and Texas LNG and its need for pipelines. There has still been and there is both opposition from the tribe and the South Texas Environmental Justice Network. As well as other organizations that were mentioned before. They have also opposed the valley crossing pipeline, which would pose the same risk as that flaming hole that we all saw happen in the Gulf. By the way, these are not acts of God, they are the failures of man-made technology. Deal with it. SpaceX is the same story as to when big agriculture colonized the region and left behind pesticides on the land. SpaceX has already plowed over and destroyed natural lands. And as you guys presented today, you will continue to fill in wetlands, which will continue to destroy our natural habitats here. I have traveled the world and guess what? There is no place like home, y'all. So yeah, anyways, um, it is a fact that we are the last place along the Texas coast that has not been completely industrialized. Or as I like to say, colonized. I don't have to echo anymore of what others who have spoken before me in opposition have stated. Only a megalomaniac with deeply rooted colonization ideology would have so many people. Believe that, you know, in a fear-based faith, one that would, would have people quoting the Bible saying that we need to leave this planet. When we are stored of this, we are stored to creation, okay? Uh, uh, this is disgusting. This is a disgusting display of power. He is a megalomaniac. I don't give a shit what anybody else here has to say and has to defend him. I'm sorry, this has to end. This is 500 years of colonization. This is 500 years of our people being bullied and pushed into genocide. And this is further and in the global south, many people indigenous leaders are dying at our expense. Because everybody else across the globe wants to be comfortable. And wants to provide this fracked gas and wants to take advantage of it or use it and, and, and take out and, and draw the dead from the ground. You, you can't. Water is life. Air is life. It is alive. What you are taking out and pumping out of the ground is dead. It is fossil fuels. It is contributing further.
Thirty seconds.
For climate destruction. And that is what this project is doing. And this is why I oppose it. And this is why we need a full and complete and comprehensive. Environmental impact study statement. And that's what needs to be done. And I oppose this and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Um, our next speaker is Ken Teague. Ken, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, here we go. Um, I'm a retired coastal scientist and ecologist with 40 years experience, mostly in Texas and Louisiana. I'm a certified wetland scientist and a certified senior ecologist. I'm commenting as a knowledgeable and concerned scientist and citizen of the US and the state of Texas. And as a fifth generation native Texan, I have no conflict of interest whatsoever in commenting on this, unlike many others. The assertion that Cape Canaveral was more environmentally sensitive than Boca Chica is ridiculous. There's a long list of threatening endangered species that occur at Boca Chica, including ocelot, jaguarundi, piper, clover, apelmati, falcon. And several sea turtle species. Uh, not to that, uh, Cape, Cape Canaveral. SpaceX could not get away with its unlawful abuses of power affecting local users and the local community as they have at Boca Chica. Uh, it is not Cape Canaveral. Um, it's one of the most uh unique and productive coastal habitats uh in, in the United States. It's, it was extremely isolated until SpaceX showed up. How SpaceX got authorized permitting to set up its initial operations in that particular location is beyond me. It's truly outrageous that SpaceX was ever allowed to locate there. And it certainly should not be allowed to expand. SpaceX was not honest with us about what it was doing there. It has much grander plans than it has ever disclosed. Uh, purpose and need of the EA. Um, I'd like to add, recommend that FAA make sure that it uh checks uh that, that it is in fact US policy and FAA policy. To colonize Mars and the moon. That's embedded in the purpose and need statement of this EA. Pretty ridiculous to me. Sounds like SpaceX maybe is trying to promote the creation of the idea that this is US policy. Uh, posed action will have significant environmental impacts. So this draft PEA does not meet the requirement. If the FAA does not produce an EIS, the agency should be sued for administrative relief. Um, FAA persists in its assertions that impacts.
Thirty seconds.
Uh, are not significant because they will be mitigated. Then the FAA must identify, describe and formally commit to the specific mitigation proposed to avoid having significant impact. This is a matter of NEPA case law. Ignore it, extra own peril. Um, stop there. I've got lots more. Uh, this is a terrible project.
Thank you for your comments. Our next five speakers are Frank Painter, Alex Munoz, Richard Bernard. Hewlin Gamble and Emma Guvara. Frank, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Okay, hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to comment today. My name is Frank Painter. I order, I hold earned master and doctor degrees in electromagnetic theory. And I worked as a research scientist at the Ohio State University before retiring in 2010. Having grown up in Florida, I had the unique experience and experience of watching. Having grown up in Florida, I had the unique experience, experience of watching army tanks drive south on A-1A during the Cuban Missile Crisis and watching Saturn V rockets lift off from Cape Canaveral toward the last successful moonshots. In the ensuing decades, I have watched our nation turn away from human space exploration in favor of amorphous social programs. With respect to the proposed FAA environmental assessment, I would like to make two points. First, I would note that Cape Canaveral has existed as a space launch site since 1949, and in the more than 70 years of spaceflight operations to date, there have been no major environmental disruptions. Surely this gives ample evidence that launch facilities and local environments can coexist peacefully, especially since the Cape Canaveral environments are much more heavily populated than the Boca Chica site. Secondly, I would like to point out that humanity is now in a much more important race than the race, than the space race of my generation, the race for existence as a species. Although highly unlikely on a year-to-year basis, the probability of a humanity-ending asteroid strike at some unknowable point in the future is 100% certain. The only possible defense against a planet-killer asteroid strike is to have a robust deep-space travel capability, exactly the capability being developed right now in Boca Chica. It would be the height of irony if an adverse environmental assessment ruling instead intended to prevent low-probability wildlife extinctions at Boca Chica instead contributed materially to the extinction of the entire human species, along with all those other species we thought we were protecting. Moreover, if we are a multi-planetary species when that happens, and it will, then even if we aren't able to avert the catastrophe, we can bring humanity and all those other species back to life on Earth after a century or so. Surely a goal worth promoting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is Alex Munoz. Alex, if you're on the call, perhaps under a different name, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Okay, our next speaker is Richard Bernard. Richard, I'm going to ask you to unmute. Richard Bernard. Okay, our next speaker is Hewlin Gamble. Hewlin, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hi there.
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you so much. I first want to pay my respect to the FAA for their oversight. As a pilot and flight instructor, I have tremendous respect for what they do on a day-to-day basis. I've listened very closely to comments supporting and opposing SpaceX and their super-heavy starship program. And while I completely stand with those who support the project, I also want to emphasize concern for those who have legitimate opposing views. I want to make one concern known to everyone here. SpaceX is currently in fierce competition with several private companies who will do anything possible to delay SpaceX, as they have a significant technological lead on the competition. And while the majority of those opposing the project today sound legitimate, one or two have stood out to me as potentially having ulterior motives for wanting to delay the project. I'll leave it there. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is Emma Guvara, who I'm not seeing on the Zoom, followed by Stephanie Taylor. Stephanie, if you would, please raise your hand so I can identify you. Stephanie Taylor. Okay, Mitchell Maxi. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Mitchell Maxi.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, I would like to speak in favor of SpaceX's operations for super-heavy. I also would like to reiterate the last person. I mean, there's several people, but a few callers back, someone said that it would be ironic that an environmental review like this would stop something like SpaceX, SpaceX a super-heavy being implemented here, and I'd like to share that sentiment as well. You know, we have an opportunity to look beyond the small environmental impact that is a few, a few bangs and a few booms. And we should look beyond to a bigger bang and a bigger boom that might happen here on Earth. And I think planning ahead and making the idea possible for us to become a multi-planet species is a huge concern and a valid concern, and I think we should actually instill ourselves to support these efforts. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is Kyle Denny. Kyle, I'm going to ask you to unmute. And I posted the remaining speakers in the chat box, which are Kyle Denny, Bill Wilson, Gail Alfar, and Nicholas Andrich. Kyle, I'm going to ask you to mute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Alrighty. Hello, my name is Kyle. I have a degree in physics and astronomy. Now, I'm not a local. I'm representing myself, but I happen to have grown up around Cape Canaveral, and I can speak to my experiences growing up around spaceflight activities and can speak to the impact that these can cause. Now, the Saturn V, the Shuttle, and the Falcon rockets all riled the area with no significant environmental impact, despite being so loud that they can shake your chest, excuse me. The Shuttle riled the entire state with similar sonic booms on re-entry from 1984 to 2011. No significant impacts were caused to either wildlife or day-to-day life. Additionally, Kennedy Space Center exists within a wildlife refugee, one of the most well-maintained wildlife refugees in the state of Florida, with an incredible range of protected wildlife, including bald eagles and endangered sea turtles. Fuel plants also exist in Cape Canaveral to store propellant, again with minimal impact. So long as SpaceX takes similar measures as to what has been done at Kennedy Space Center for 60 years, I have no doubt the environmental impacts will be similar, as super-heavy is only slightly louder despite being more powerful than the Saturn V or the space shuttle per the environmental impact reports. SpaceX is capable of doing this and has expressed desire to do so. Should SpaceX do this, I believe that this actually could be a benefit to the environment when compared to the environmental protection currently in place. I believe the concerns made in this call are valid. However, they have been exacerbated to the point of absurdity by a very vocal minority. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is Bill Wilson. Bill, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Bill. You have three minutes. Bill Wilson, are you there? Okay, Bill, if you're speaking, we now can't hear you. I'm going to ask you to unmute again. Bill, are you there?
Yes, I'd like to reiterate. The FAA may be used-
Bill, Bill, this is the facilitator Jennifer Piggott. We couldn't hear you. Go ahead and restart your comments.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
I'm here to express my personal opinion that the FAA should approve with all haste any, any documents that would help SpaceX build the Starship Super Heavy Launch System in Boca Chica Starbase area for the goal of making humanity a multi-planetary species. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is Gail Alfar. Gail, I'm going to ask you to unmute. Gail, are you there?
Yeah, I'm just checking to see if you can hear me.
There we go. We can hear you now. You have three minutes.
Yes, I'm here. Okay, thank you very, very much. I am a resident of Texas. I have visited Boca Chica Starbase area about five, six times. I'm advocating that SpaceX be allowed to proceed with, with their, with their super-heavy rocket and all other rockets in the future. I feel this an inspiration to kids, kids in the Rio Grande Valley. It's an economic stimulus, of course, for the of Texas and for the entire United States. I feel I feel like the area really needs it's glow someday become a craft that'll make our species, our human, our human species to be multi-planetary. This is an honor. This is not only an honor that it's happening in our country, but that it's happening in my state of Texas. So I, it's something that we should be really, really proud of, that it's actually happening in our lifetimes. So I think that everyone listening, you know, just in my passion, I have five kids I own. And I know numerous kids. I'm a registered nurse. I work with kids in schools. I see their eyes light, and this is, is being enabled through this incredible company SpaceX. So I just think everyone needs to give this company the max amount of support that they possibly can. I kind of want to take up the whole three minutes, not to be greedy, but just be and the people that couldn't have liked, have talked, to want me to just kind of continue for the full minutes. So I'm going to go on. Incredible place.
Gail, Gail, this is the facilitator Jennifer Piggott. We are having difficulty hearing you, probably every third word-
So inspiring. Voice is unprecedented.
Thirty seconds. Gail, are you still there? Gail, are you still there? If you're talking, we can no longer hear you. Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, our next registered speaker is Andreas Agustin Vallejos. Andreas, I'm going to ask you to unmute. Can we restart the timer, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Agustín Vallejos. I'm here to talk in favor of SpaceX and the proposed action. I'm studying systems engineering because SpaceX inspired me to do that. And I think we need to separate the entire only thing on this planet of the multi-planetary species thing. We need to think that if a meteor come to Earth and hit it, there will be the end of the humanity. If we can become a multi-planetary species, we will have opportunity for humanity. Obviously thinking also on this planet, on this beautiful planet. SpaceX have amazing plans for mitigating the impacts on the environmental, environment there. In summary, take care of the planet and become a multi-planetary species must be the top interest for the humanity. Thank you so much, and have a great night.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, those are all the speakers I have registered to provide an oral comment this evening. I see a couple of hands. I'm going to quickly call on those individuals to see if they want to make an oral comment before we conclude tonight's meeting. Jeffrey Curbin, I'm going to ask you to unmute. Jeffrey Curbin. Okay, thank you. I see your note. Pedro Vargas, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hi. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. So my name is Pedro Vargas, and I am a mechanical engineer student at the Federal University of Rio de Janeiro, located in Brazil. I would like to thank the FAA and SpaceX for allowing me to express my opinion regarding the environmental assessment for the SpaceX Starship Super Heavy Launch Vehicle Program at the SpaceX Boca Chica Launch Site. I speak on behalf, on behalf of myself only. As an engineer, as an engineering student, and as an space enthusiast, I think that the possibility of allowing civilization to be a multi-planetary species is of the utmost importance. I have followed, followed and watched in all throughout the, throughout the years, many of the achievements of SpaceX and its engineering team. It is clear that they represent the best of ingenuity, bravery, and dedication. I believe that this program will allow for SpaceX mission to be fulfilled. I would like to ask the FAA to give this process the due diligence it deserves, as well as to do it, as well as to do it in the fastest and safest way possible. I urge the US regulators to allow this endeavor to continue to flourish and benefit humanity as a whole. Therefore, I express my full support for the, for the SpaceX team in its operations in Boca Chica. I can't wait to watch Starship and Super Heavy to be launched from Boca Chica, Texas. Thank you FAA. Thank you SpaceX.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Emma Guvara. Emma, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Emma Guvara. I am a lifelong resident of Brownsville, Texas. I'm also a multi-generational resident of Brownsville, Texas. I first off want to start by addressing how absolutely disgusted I am by the audacity of all of these pro SpaceX supporters spouting the exact same rhetoric spouted by a billionaire with nothing but his own interests in mind so that he can make more money off of his apartheid emeralds. How dare you? How selfish is it to assume that there is really no environmental impact and that we are all a bunch of environmental extremists? When you don't even live here, when you visit here maybe once, when you've lived here for maybe two years, I don't want to hear it. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. I also want to point out the fact that nobody has really talked about the people when it comes down to this. We've seen a lot about like SpaceX is creating jobs and is doing great things for this community, and the community loves it. That is so far from the truth, so far from the truth, and none of you could know that because you're not a part of this community. So how dare- So how dare you come here and act like you understand even an iota of what's going on here? And this land, not only is it ancestral and sacred, it does not belong to us. It belongs to the Carrizo Comer Crudo tribe first and foremost, who have not been who have not discussed this at all with the FAA. The FAA refuses to discuss this, SpaceX refuses to discuss this, LNG refuses to discuss this. How much more indigenous erasure will you all be complicit in? You have been sold a lie by a billionaire, a lie. And you're just repeating a billionaire's lies because you think it's going to be cool to go to space? How ridiculous are you five? This is not an episode of freaking Star Trek. This is our lives. This is our home. I can see the explosions from the rockets from my window. And there is a huge environmental impact. The last time that there was an explosion here, they could not clean up our beach. The beach where I played as a child, the beach where my family has gone fishing, the beach where thousands of people have used as a place of recreation, as a place for food, because this is a low-income community that is majority-minority, which nobody has mentioned. This is racial injustice. This is environmental racism, and you are trying to get us to leave our homes. We have already seen the impacts of gentrification in our communities. I myself have seen my rent raised. And I just, I cannot believe the audacity some of you have. And you need to take a good look at your lives and think about it, because this is ridiculous. And you are disgusting neo-colonizers with not even a penny in this race. This has nothing to do with you. Listen to directly impacted voices. The FAA needs to at the very least do an environmental impact statement, but at the most, this entire project should be canceled. I am disgusted and I am angry and I cannot believe this.
That's three minutes. Thank you for your comments. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have time for two more speakers this evening that I have on the list. Yosiel, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Yes, I just want to thank everyone for their time listening to all of this. I can tell there's a lot of people that are against going to space, colonizing the Moon and Mars, and actually leaving Earth. And I believe it's not just because of where it's being built or how it's being built, but the fact that a lot of these people are closed-minded. From what I can tell, they just don't have the capacity mentally to foresee us leaving this planet. I believe a lot of these people are scared. I believe that we shouldn't be. And boldly, we should go out into space. Texas is the perfect location for this, due to the fact that we have so much area around us. This country is so huge that the people that don't want to live there, I would suggest moving because we're going to space. Whether you like it or not, I hate to say it like this, but it's the truth. We're going out there. We're going to live among the stars. And I truly feel bad for those that can't foresee a better future for humanity, a better just what I would like to say is just a better overall community, because if we can get behind something so big like this and actually put it together, there's nothing that can stop America. There's nothing that can stop us. We're one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I believe we're going to get justice on all those Martians up there that owe us that land. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, our next and final speaker this evening is David. David, I'm going to ask you to unmute. Please state your full name for the record.
Good evening, David Johnson, and thank you for letting me speak. My comment is SpaceX is a national asset which currently provides the only American capability to reach Earth orbit and the International Space Station. Starbase and Starship represent moving forward with space technology, reducing environmental impacts through asset reuse, as opposed to dropping them in the ocean, which used to happen. Also is substantial job creation, substantial technology creation, widespread economic benefit both locally and nationally. And finally, the opportunity to reach new levels of space travel, space tourism, space industry, making, hopefully in the future, less pollution on Earth by moving it off Earth, and ultimately sustainable space residency. I fully support SpaceX's mission and efforts and request the FAA to issue SpaceX a vehicle operator license from the Office of Commercial Space Transportation so that they can operate spaceship, Starship, Super Heavy, launch vehicle with all due speed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And folks, my apologies, I skipped someone. We will hear from one more commenter this evening, Jessica Tretu. May I ask you to unmute?
Hi, good evening. It's Jessica Tetra, City Commissioner from Brownsville, Texas. How is everyone doing tonight? Um, I thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I have worked on this project for the last 10 years. You know, I get so emotional hearing some of these comments. I've served the city of Brownsville for the last 10 years. Back in 2013, the Brownsville area was named the poorest community in the entire nation of the United States. That's not something that I say lightly. And that year, Elon Musk chose our community to be the next home of his SpaceX operation. And very, very quickly after setting up shop, this area went from being one of the poorest areas, most looked down on in the entire nation, to being give me a second, this makes me very emotional. We're no longer in that position. We are now one of the most sought-after zip codes to live and raise your children in. And it, I don't just ask you, I beg you to give them that permit. There are so many people here in the Brownsville area who have benefited from this project coming to our area. SpaceX has been so immensely generous to our students. Just this weekend, they all came out in buses with posters to thank Mr. Musk for his generosity to the community. So yes, there are people who don't understand and appreciate this project. But I beg you, on behalf of those students, on behalf of everybody here in our community who relies on them for work. You know, they employ over 2,000 local people. On behalf of them, I ask you, I beg you, please give them that permit. We need it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ladies and gentlemen, we apologize that time has run out before some of you had an opportunity to provide your oral comments. Please remember that all comments, whether submitted orally, electronically, or in writing, will receive equal consideration. You also have an opportunity to register for the second public hearing this coming Wednesday, and you can provide an oral comment during that meeting. Please submit your comments electronically via the project email at spacexbocachica@icf.com, or you can mail your comments to miss Stacy Z, SpaceX P E A, care of ICF 9300, Lee Highway, Fairfax, Virginia 22031. Before including your address, phone number, email address, or other personal identifying information in your comment, be advised that your entire comment, including your personal identifying information, may be publicly available at any time. To ensure the FAA has sufficient time to consider public input, comments must be submitted by November 1st, 2020. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for your attendance. This hearing is adjourned.